Recording in progress.
All right, excellent. Let's see, you've got to find the right screen, that isn't it. But we want to welcome everybody to our city council meeting. We always, there you are, we always value folks who participate and help us and guide this beautiful city. Before we start, I wanted to ask our valuable city clerk Clementine to explain how folks can participate, please?
Yes, good afternoon. For the safe attendance of our public meetings, masks are required for all who attended person regardless of vaccination status, except those who are younger than two or have a medical condition that prevents wearing a mask. Please keep phones and devices in the council chamber muted to prevent audio interference. And there are two ways you can join virtually in today's meeting. You can join us using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device, and you can also call into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at icertchmonterre.org. An up-to-date version of the Zoom software must be used. To call in by telephone, dial toll-free 833-568-8864 and then enter meeting ID 1607729333. And if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using and updating Zoom are available at monterre.org-publicmeetings. And to make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. And public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. I will call on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. Please stay within the time limit established for today's meeting and a countdown timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. Today's meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with about 10 seconds delay and on Comcast channel 25 with up to 90 seconds delay, and we look forward to receiving public comments.
All right, very well done. Then one more thing, please introduce your caring city council.
Yes, Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Williamson.
Here.
And Mayor Robinson.
Yes, and I am here as well. Well, the first item on our agenda is always a pleasure and a great joy to recognize city employees for milestones, anniversaries, and retirements. And looking at that, we have a long list of people who have been with the city for 25 years, 35 years, 20, 30 years of service, and you'll be introduced by their department head shortly. And then we had some retirements in our third quarter. And so that's very exciting because as we know, and as a staff member for 35 years as a teacher and then a volunteer in schools, I totally understand that staff members do the work. And so they're the ones interacting with the public and getting nothing but praise out in the community, I can assure you. With that, I'm going to turn this over to the valiant city manager Hans Uslar, who can take it from here, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you stated, it's always a great pleasure of honoring our employees who have been working for throughout so many years through so many challenges. And today is one of those quarterly days where we are mentioning our team members. I'll start with Lori Tate, our fitness supervisor in Parks and Recreation. Lori has been with us for 25 years and her department head and our Parks and Recreation Director, Karen Larson, will say a few words to Lori, who kept the community fit through remote classes during COVID as one of her accomplishments. So go ahead, Karen.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers.
Good evening.
I have had the great pleasure of working Lori Tate for over 25 years. I first met her when she was a part-time aerobics instructor for the Monterey Sports Center, and she quickly became the head aerobics instructor and then the part-time aerobics coordinator. Lori demonstrated a rare combination of high-energy charismatic teaching style with strong management skills, incredible scheduling abilities, and excellent certifications. So in 1997, she was promoted to a regular part-time or 30-hour aerobics coordinator. And Lori continued to build the Monterey Sports and Aerobics Program by offering new formats such as group cycling. She also made scheduling aerobics in two studios, two swimming pools with 60 instructors look easy. In 2002, she was promoted to a full-time group exercise coordinator, and Lori consistently stayed on trend with fitness industry standards and developments. She herself could teach a multitude of formats and was always willing to learn. So whether it was yoga or group cycling, kickboxing or boot camp, Lori could do it all and do it well. What's notable to me is that over the years Lori had inspired students in her classes to go into the fitness industry. So students looked up to her as an instructor, and then with her encouragement went on to pursue their certifications and become instructors themselves. So she has actively mentored, trained, and counseled hundreds of employees for many years. And I would say what's notable also about that is that she's able to retain those instructors in an industry where turnover is generally very high. So in 2020, Lori also accepted the opportunity to be the interim fitness manager, and in 2022 was promoted to fitness supervisor. So in addition to group exercise, Lori now oversees the cardio and weight rooms and the staff that work in those rooms as well as personal training at the Monterey Sports Center. So these areas are flourishing under her leadership, and we're so lucky to have her on the City of Monterey staff. I'd like to congratulate Lori on 25 years of excellent service.
Thank you. That was just a very impressive summary. I don't know how many of our recipients who are being acknowledged are with us. So what I'll do when we're done with the introductions and those excellent summaries of their fantastic service, we'll see if any of them want to say anything. We'll do that after the end of the introductions, if that's okay with everybody. So Karen, very well done. I'm just glad that's not a retirement for her, but just continued service.
Me too, me too.
I hear that. Okay, back to our city manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Karen. Next one up is Vicky Courtney. Vicky has been working for 25 years for the city of Monterey. She works in our finance department, and I will ask Rafella to please say a few words about Vicky.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Vicky informed me that she wasn't going to be able to attend. She's came back from vacation today and was coming, but so I've been here for a year, and so my interactions with Vicky has been nothing but positive. She's always a breath of fresh air. She's always able to assist and willing goes above and beyond. And so what I did was I also asked some of her immediate supervisor to draft something and said, send it to me to just kind of tell me what she thought, that's something that she thought that we should let the public know. So I'll just read out what she said. She says, Vicky has been an exemplary employee during her tenure with the city as the lead in the city's accountable division. She has a go-to, she's the go-to person for troubleshooting, difficulty questions, and challenging situations. She works directly with vendors and the system and reconciling the billing and payment discrepancies. And her diligent efforts reconciling the city's cow card, CalM, and PG&E bills on a monthly basis. It's critical to ensuring that all of the partners' expenditure charges are accurate and that the audit documentation is appropriately received. And during the conference center renovation and construction project, she also provided the crucial assistance to public works by monitoring the project budget and on expenditures as well as preparing and presenting financial reports to the key staff. And this is just one example of many. So Vicky is always willing to step up and help, and since she has this can-do attitude, I think it's the job done. That's from her immediate supervisor. And again, like I said, since I've been here, she has just been a breath of fresh air. Anytime I ask her for anything or need some background information, she is more than willing to jump in. She'll see you struggling, and you will struggle. Hey, can I help you with that? So I so appreciate that, especially in our department as we've had staff come and go. But she is, she is just a pleasure to be here and wish her well and hope she stays another 20 years.
Thank you, Rafella. And how true that is when you're coming in and we're so glad to have you. You're already. It's just really good to have excellent people there that obviously you know what you're doing, but just to learn how Monterey does things.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We're grateful for both of you. Thank you. All right, city manager.
Okay, the next one is Ben Erom. He works in our conference center. And I have asked him to say a few words about Ben because the conference center is reporting also to the city manager's office.
Yeah, and Ben is one of our employees who was not able to make it today as well. But he's been with the city of Monterey for over 25 years and is a proud member now of the Monterey Conference Center staff. He spent the majority, actually up until 2020, at the Monterey Sports Center. And I know Karen has a lot of positive things to say about Ben. He was always so well-regarded as someone that users of the sports center could rely on and say hello to as a facility attendant. And he's adapted very well and is now someone that you'll see helping customers at the conference center, setting up tables, chairs, and providing outstanding customer service to the thousands of visitors who frequent the conference center each year. And we are proud to recognize Ben for his service to the city of Monterey.
Good. Thank you so much, Nat. Hans?
The next one is William Perkins, captain in the fire department. And I learned it the hard way when you sent him a birthday card that says Dean William. He will reject it because he's known as Barry. So we have Barry not here today, right? And somebody from the fire department there?
You know, we don't have the fire chief here today, but we do. Go ahead.
So Barry has been working for the city of Monterey for 35 years. He's a fire captain. And Barry has been in different positions throughout the years in the city of Monterey. And one of the largest initiatives that he actually started was the Fire Boat Initiative, where he organized grants. And we got our first fireboat. We are now through the first fireboat and in the middle of the life cycle of the second fireboat. But it was this kind of vision that brought Barry to our attention here in in public works and also in the city manager's office. Has been working for us for 35 years. He has been very faithful to our city, has allowed his kids also to do internships here, and they have done great here and have started marvelous careers on the East Coast. So very proud to have Barry here among the honorees 35 years. The next one is Jeff Ray. He is our Public Works Inspector, actually got promoted to Senior Public Works Inspectors. Many times when you go out and see public works projects, there's always someone standing around. And people always say there are people standing around. These, how many people does it take to dig a hole? Two and five standing around? But the point is, there are a lot of things that have to be supervised and have to be implemented that the contractor also doesn't, she does, out of our specifications. And to say a few words about Jeff Ray, who deserves all the credit for 20 years of service, will be Andrea Rennie.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mayor Robinson, councilmembers. Thank you. It's my pleasure to say that Jeff is celebrating his 20th anniversary with the city. As Hans mentioned, he started out as an inspector and is now a senior public works inspector. He works in our engineering division and in the construction management group. Jeff has been such a great asset to the public works team. Whether he's assigned to a project or not, he has just amazing, great historical knowledge of the city's infrastructure. And he's worked on a multitude of projects with the city of Monterey. I just want to point out a couple of projects that stand out. There are the Canary Row Garage Elevator Enclosure, the Waterfront Lot, and the Laguna Nita Marada Detention Basin Projects. All of those projects had their own challenges and some very specific permit requirements. And Jeff's knowledge and expertise were just invaluable for the completion of these projects. I've been working for Jeff since he started, with Jeff since he started here, and he's just a great wealth of knowledge, and we're very lucky to have Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. And we're also very lucky to have a new public works director. And that is you. So on behalf of the council and the entire city and community, congratulations. Well-earned and well-deserved.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure, and it's just such a wonderful team. I appreciate it.
Yes, you said it. It's a team. But yeah, we're just delighted. I'm personally delighted that you've taken that position. All right, so back to you, city manager.
Last but not least, Mickey Rubash. Mickey is in our police department, very well-known to the community. We honor him for 30 years of service, and the police chief will say a few words about him. And again, Mickey was one of two K-9 officers that we had in one time, so.
I remember that well.
Go ahead, chief.
And I'm going to ask Mickey to come on up here with me. So Mayor, councilmembers, Dave Holber, your chief of police, and I actually created a letter that we put on a plaque here for Mickey. The Monterey Police Department takes great pride in recognizing Monterey Police Sergeant Meyer Mickey Rubash, badge 201, on the occasion of his 30 years of service to the city of Monterey. Sergeant Mickey Rubash, number 201, has been an integral part of the Monterey Police Department for the past 30 years, from August 10, 1992, to present. Sergeant Rubash's assignments included being patrol officer for eight years, community services waterfront patrol for two years, investigations juvenile officer for one year, as Hans mentioned, K-9 officer for six years, field training officer for three years, and community action team officer for four years. Sergeant Rubash was promoted to police sergeant on January 17, 2016, and has served as a patrol sergeant for six years. Sergeant Rubash leads by example in exhibiting professionalism, service integrity, hard work, and commitment to the law enforcement profession. The city of Monterey Police Department thanks Sergeant Rubash for his dedication to our community for the past 30 years. Thank you, Mickey. And Mayor, I know you had related that if somebody wanted to say anything, I don't mean to put Mickey on the spot, but you're here if you want to say something.
First of all, I want to thank you, everybody in this room and the community at large, for affording me the opportunity to be a member of the Monterey Police Department and be able to serve this community for the past 30 years. It is amazing how quickly time goes by.
Right.
Seems as if it were yesterday when I showed up here for my orientation as a new employee. And lastly, I want to thank my family, my wife, my son, and my younger son Ari, who often asks me, so Dad, when are you going to retire so you can come to all of my games? I appreciate it. Please give me the opportunity and the patience to continue this journey a little bit longer. And thank you again for recognizing me for my years of service.
Yeah, well, Mickey, you had me worried there for a minute. I thought you were going to make an announcement.
Well, we'll see. I'm still enjoying this wonderful journey.
You know what? That is so well said. If you're still enjoying your work, that's wonderful. We go way back, and I can remember Mary Ann Fanaki and Colleen Sullivan, who actually were teacher colleagues of mine at Hilltop School and when they started the K-9 program. And I know you were instrumental in that and ran it for six years. And I can remember you would come up to our schools and our playgrounds, and you would introduce your dog to all the kids, and they would pet it and hug it, and it was just a wonderful dog. But when it was on duty, it was on duty, right?
That's true, sir.
Yes. And we're certainly happy to see some of your fellow Monterey Police Department there. The city of Monterey has the best police department in the country. It's a role model for community policing, and you're a real key to making that happen. So thank you and congratulations.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, so we have a retirement. Is that going to be Chief Dave again?
Thank you, Mayor. So Sergeant Aaron Delgado, badge 117, recently retired. And on the occasion of his retirement, we presented him on behalf of you and the city council a plaque. I'll read part of it, just to tell you some of the things that Sergeant Delgado did. Sergeant Aaron Delgado, badge 117, was an integral part of the Monterey Police Department for other over 28 years, from 1993 to 2022. Aaron's assignments included being a police services technician for six years, a patrol officer, community action team officer, a detective, and a field training officer for 12 years before being promoted to sergeant in 2011, where he served as a patrol sergeant, oversaw the field training program, and was a detective sergeant, all for the last 11 years of his career. So we take this opportunity to recognize Aaron and wish him well in his new adventures.
Thank you, chief. Absolutely. And you know, it's very heartwarming to see people who have been with our police department for a long time. Because as you know, there's a pretty serious rapid turnover, and it's difficult to recruit police. The fact that you have people who have been with the police department for so long says a lot about the police department in our wonderful city. So congratulations and thank you to all. Was there anyone else who was early on who was in attendance that we know of? I didn't think anyone was here.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so I think we probably need to open that up to public comments since it's obviously an agenda item. Did we have anybody in the council chambers who wanted to speak on this item?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. We do have one on the employee retirements and anniversaries.
Yes, please.
It's specifically for public comment on this item.
Oh, yes.
Retirements. No. Okay, no public comment on retirements and anniversaries, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and online, Clementine, anyone?
We do have a few, and I would just also, a few of them were raised for a while. So I'll just also point out, this is for the employee retirements and anniversaries. So if that's what you're speaking on, please keep your hand raised, otherwise lower it if it's for a future item. So let's hear from Esther Malkin.
Good afternoon. I wanted to chime in on the wonderful words on Mickey Rubash. He has been a great leader for the police department in our neighborhood and has been very, very generous with his time and response to our neighborhood association. And along with the whole police department, as you all well know, that my neighborhood has a very strong relationship with the police department. And we can never say enough good things about them, but congratulations to Mickey for getting well-deserved recognition. Thank you.
All right, and thank you. Whoops, let me get back to our list. Okay, we have one as well from Kent Glensor. So we will hear from him next. Please go ahead.
Are you hearing me?
Yes, we are.
All right, great. So my comment is about the public good of today's session entirely. I respectfully request that councilperson Albert recuse himself from this meeting entirely. His participation in today's session may be a disservice to local democratic process in the Monterey way. Recently, a push-pull.
Okay.
Negative campaign disguise.
Excuse me, sir. Kent, Kent, Kent.
Leashed in Monterey voters. A push-pull is an unethical campaign practice according to the American Association for Public Opinion Research that abuses the public trust. This push-pull distorts wildly councilpersons while Williamson's stance on many issues. It invokes Mayor Clyde's supportive Albert. The poll is a dog whistle, disrespectful, filled with innuendo, and slathers all Monterey voters with the slime of hardball. Winning is what matters politics. It impugns, denigrates, and defames a fellow councilperson. In fact, it is capable of inciting physical and psychological violence on Williamson and his family. Mr. Albert perhaps has no involvement in this nefarious, scrum, democracy-destroying effort. And perhaps Mayor Clyde also is unaware, but until Mr. Albert and his campaign make a public statement about this, he should not be permitted to participate in the city council anyway. Thank you.
Okay, we want to thank you, Mr. Glensor, I'm sorry, Kent. And that would have been part of general comments. So when it comes up again for open mic, we'll consider that done already. Anyone else on this particular topic with recognizing our employees?
There are no other hands raised in Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Then let's go right ahead then, please, to public comments. And these are items not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to our closed-session items before we adjourn to closed session, we'll give you an opportunity to do that. And so these are items that are within the jurisdiction of the city of Monterey. We always appreciate how positive people are and how they reach out and how the staff responds to them. So let's find out if there's anyone in the chambers for general public comments, non-agenda items, please, Nat.
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor, and we will start with the first gentleman who is ready to speak.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is John Stackpole. I'm a local physician here in Monterey. And I presented to the city planning department in August regarding the problem of motorized vehicles on the Monterey Bay Recreation Path. On August 4, I was involved in an incident where I was struck head-on by a motorized bicycle or electric motorbike on the path. I won't go into the details of the accident, but since that time, I've done a lot of investigation. And it turns out that the vehicle that hit me is a electric motorbike that actually has the capabilities of being class one, two, three, and quote-unquote off-road, meaning that it has approximately 2,000 watt of power and can go in excess of 30 miles an hour. Vehicle that is, weighs 80 pounds. If you, and then as I started to look into the rules and regulations of the rec path, I noticed that about 100 feet from where I was struck, there's a sign that says, no motorized bicycles allowed on the path. "No motorized bicycles allowed on the path." But I know that the city has relaxed the rules to allow some businesses to make money renting electric bicycles for utilization on the path. That's limited to class-two bicycles. But yet, we have vehicles that can be changed from one, two, three, and fully unlimited. That's like selling a semi-automatic weapon that has a switch, so it's just a fully automatic. But it's legal because it's semi-automatic. I don't think we'd tolerate that. Then, when we go to look at what's actually allowed on the rec path, I spent hours on the internet trying to find that information. And it wasn't until I went to city planning and spoke to one of the system planners, who was able to give me by hand a document saying what is actually legal on the rec path. And that's how I found this information out. Well, then I started to look at, well, what about enforcement? And so I sent an email to the chief of police, and he graciously called me back. And I think we spent probably at least half an hour speaking about enforcement. And one of his officers had actually told me that the police do not have jurisdiction on the rec path. Chief Ober clarified that and said that it's actually more, it's impossible to enforce. It's too busy. They try and chase kids doing wheelies, but the kids dive into the pedestrians, and they can't safely chase them. So what are we going to do about this? I think this is a call to action. I fortunately suffered simply a minor injury, but I'm a fully grown adult male wearing productive equipment. Let's imagine if that electric motorbike that could have been going thirty miles an hour had hit a small child with no protective gear. We might be talking about a lethal injury at that point in time. So I would respectfully suggest that there should be a call to action for the city of Monterey to find a safe alternate to the rec path for any vehicles that travel at significant rates of speed. And I would suggest that that consists of protected bike lanes marked through Monterey outside of the rec path.
Thank you very much. We did receive your email as well. I wanted to assure you of that. Thank you.
Great, great. And I actually, I've revised, I've added more information to my assessment of the situation. I'll leave these here if anybody's interested, and I appreciate any follow-up.
Right. We'll get that. It'll be in the public record. Thank you. And even though I'm sorry I'm not there, I'll be sure to get a copy.
Okay. And I apologize. I do have to have a shift starting at five, so I'm going to depart.
Okay. Thanks for coming. Anyone else in the chambers?
And we have one more public comment in the chambers.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Joanne Christ. I've written to you gentlemen many times.
Yes.
According to the organizational chart presented on the city's website, the city council is responsible to the citizens of Monterey, the people who have elected you. You then are responsible for the supervision of the city staff. I will preface my comments by applauding certain city staff. These include our wonderful city clerk, Ms. Bonner Twine, and the departments under the management of Kim Cole, our community development director, who are all incredibly helpful, knowledgeable, and polite. Unless we forget, our first responders under chiefs Hober and Tensel can do an outstanding job under kind circumstances. Shouldn't this type of behavior be expected from all city employees, particularly those at the highest levels? Our city attorney has only responded to me either when the city manager has not wanted to waste his time on questions or if I have threatened litigation. In my opinion, the city manager's office, and I will apologize, Nat, this is the first time I've met you. With the exception of Ms. Singh, the administrative assistant has been unpleasant, unwilling, or unable to answer questions, rude, condescending, and dictatorial. Mr. Mayor, you received on correspondence where the city manager banned me from any interaction from a city employee, along with attempting to teach me manners and alleging that I possess utterly horrific character traits without any basis for this judgment. I don't think that this behavior is appropriate, particularly for someone paid for with our tax dollars. Does the city manager have the authority to do this to a citizen, resident, and avid voter? And for your information, Mr. Uster, my parents taught me very good and appropriate manners, so I surely don't need to be schooled by you. It appears that, other than the departments I mentioned previously as exemplary, the city staff is allergic to direct and frank questions, particularly from someone who does the research before asking questions. Why is this? The city manager has done all of the following rather than provide information which should be readily available. Tried to pass off as a financial analysis only the expenses without regard to revenues as the basis for tailing the program. This is not only disingenuous, but to someone who worked with two of the largest international accounting firms for decades, this is plain BS. If all we concern ourselves with is cutting out cost centers, I would suggest that the city manager's office be considered as they generate no revenues and no goodwill. Shifted responsibility and a circled shift in responsibility to the Houston city manager or just ignored my emails and instructed others to do the same.
All right, anyone else in the chambers now?
We do have one more, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
This is my first time here. My name is Joe Prosser. I just went down the street and talked to the lady at the front reception desk over there, and she took me to come to a city council meeting and talk about my ideas. I just had a really something simple idea for the city, just a simple, something on the lighter side, nothing too serious. I grew up in Carmel, and I went to school in Flagstaff, Arizona, studied civil engineering. And I'm just living here now. I've lived here for the past five years. And I try to, you know, kind of mobilize the city. I used to play drums around town in a band, and I try to keep the city active, or I think of ways to keep the city active. And I just noticed the issue in the Monterey County Coast Weekly about the best of Monterey County, and kind of sparked an idea in me about maybe the city can consider an idea for like a Mr. and Mrs. Monterey contest to see, you know, who to promote and mobilize the city, to see if people can come and help and donate and do charitable work in the city and, you know, maybe have a yearly contest. I sent an email to Coast Weekly, and I told them I'd come here and talk to you about it. And just something, an idea to promote, to mobilize the city, kind of to unite the city, you know, to promote, you know, general welfare and community building and charitable organizations and donations, things like that, to help recognize people who do good works in the city. And that's all I really want to say.
Oh, thanks for sharing your idea. All right, Clementine, anybody online who'd like to speak under general non-agenda items?
Yes, I do see we have a telephone caller with the last three digits five zero zero. I'll call in them first.
Okay.
So telephone caller five zero zero, please go ahead. You're going to need to dial star six to unmute. There you go.
Hello. Hello, it didn't unmute it right away. I'm Wendy Brickman. I'm president of Fisher. Hello, hello. I'm President Fisherman's Wharf Association, and I want to ask today that the city council help us get an extension from the California Coastal Commission to avoid the removal of all outdoor seating on Fisherman's Wharf by December thirty-first. The removal of this seating will negatively impact the Wharf restaurants, our locals and visitors, and the city of Monterey. So many people feel, including me, that dining outside is safer due to the pandemic, and it allows them to bring their beloved dogs on a leash and enables them to people-watch and enjoy the fresh air of the Monterey Bay. With inflation and a looming recession and high gas prices, restaurants have felt the impact of increased costs for their food, supplies, and service, and need those extra outdoor seating to make ends meet. As one restaurateur said, "We've had to reinvent ourselves all the time after COVID to keep our doors open." Open. Eliminating outdoor dining will also cause a thirty to forty percent layoff of employees and a reduction in sales of about thirty percent. We do not believe that our outdoor seating limits public access or view of the Monterey Harbor. And we're currently circulating a petition at the Wharf to confirm that our many visitors to old Fisherman's Wharf truly enjoy our fresco dining, adding to their enjoyment of a Wharf visit. As city manager Hans Usler stated in a recent Monterey article, "The Coastal Commission is suggesting to basically remove outdoor seating or make it dependent on a very complex and costly permitting process. That's a bit premature, given the current needs of our society." We totally agree, Hans. We would like to see a compromise so that our restaurants can survive and retain their outdoor seating beyond twenty-twenty-two and for years to come. And also, please join us for the Wharf's one hundred and seventy-seventh birthday party on Sunday, October ninth. From one to five, we'll have Monterey Police and Fire Department representatives, stow walkers, the money band, and of course, birthday cake. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. All right, Clementine, who else?
I'm sorry, I was speaking and forgetting about the mute button. I'm calling on Tanya Ruse. Sorry about that.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Go ahead, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, city manager, city council members. My name is, hi there. My name's Tanya Ruse. I'm with the Blue Zones Project Monterey County. And I wanted to just pop in today to share some wonderful happenings that we've been supporting in your city. First off, we partnered with the city of Monterey Parks Division and Stevenson High School in Pebble Beach, who was interested in planning a day of service for their students. And so we brought two hundred and fifty students across Monterey County, particularly about fifty students, to the city of Monterey up in Veterans Park. And these students worked to pull Janesta, which is an invasive species, and plant about fifty young trees in that area. So that was an excellent day, not only giving back to our parks, you know, augmenting open space, greenery, climate mitigation, all that good stuff, but also instilling a sense of service in our next generation in the community. So that was a really terrific partnership that I wanted to make sure to share with you all. And again, big thanks to the Parks Division for their support in helping make that happen. I also wanted to share some upcoming exciting news. So Bayview School is going to be celebrating their approval as a Blue Zones school. So big thanks to the faculty and leadership for adopting best practices that are actively improving the health and well-being of their students and staff at that school. That's going to be happening on October fourteenth. We'll have the celebration on campus there. And we'll also be hosting a big cleanup out at Ryan Ranch on October thirteenth. And we'll be hosting a worksite well-being summit. So this is a summit for any work sites in Monterey or beyond that are interested in becoming Blue Zones-approved work sites. So again, this is an opportunity for them to integrate evidence-based best practices to improve employee health and well-being. Also be having fun little events up at Elroy's, which is a Blue Zones-approved grocery store, sharing more about our work in the community, which you are all cordially invited to attend. And then lastly, Bethlehem Lutheran Church is becoming a Blue Zones-approved organization. So we're having a little celebration with them at their Oktoberfest. So lots of good movements with different organizations and entities in the city of Monterey. And we are just so grateful to continue to support health and well-being for your population. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Great, great things that you're doing, and look forward to many more. Thanks so much. Who else, Clementine?
That was the last one with hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Let's go ahead then to our consent items. Was there anybody in the public who wanted to pull a consent that we don't have now at this point?
Not that we're aware of, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and council members, comments or anything you'd like to pull, please? Any council members?
Just have a question on number five.
Would you please go ahead, Councilmember Tyler?
Yeah, so I see the attached report for the capital improvement projects for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. And I'm just wondering, is this going to be the final report? I remember in the past, there was more extensive information given in regards to the different projects that were included in the CIP program. And I'm just wondering if more information will be provided and available to the public or if this is to the extent that we'll be seeing this this year.
All right. Hans, go ahead and answer that for us, please.
Yes, the projects will be coming back individually when we are getting to the project award. And so you will learn more about the projects as they get awarded through multiple contracts over the next, hopefully, we get it all done within twelve months.
Okay, thank you. I know that we're probably a little bit short-staffed, and it's probably a little bit of capacity in changing the way that we are approaching it. But I would just offer some feedback that I like the ability to be able to see some more context and details in regards to what's included in the projects that we're approving. And they all seem like good projects that are good for the city, and we should move forward on. But hopefully, we can find a space, maybe getting back to a practice where it allows things to be a little bit more publicly available and transparent to what we're approving tonight. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And any public comments in the chambers, online?
None in chambers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
No, nor on Zoom.
All right, if there are no other questions, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, Mayor, I'm sorry. I was late in actually asking for a clarification on item four.
Of course, Councilmember Ed. Sorry, I'm not rushing. I'm just hurrying.
No, 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 I understand. Just a quick question. This is the one that's the continuation of the declaration of an emergency that authorizes us to go through the exemption of the Brown Act for our meetings. And I appreciate that we've all been doing this for a long time, two-plus years. And I'm just wondering, are we getting close to the point where we believe that at some point we will no longer have the hybrid opportunity and that we move into the expectation that the council meetings and other meetings are back in session? So I'd just like to hear from the city manager in terms of his thought about the timing.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Yes, we are getting closer. In preparation for tonight's agenda report, we actually surveyed also what other communities around us are doing. And they are still in the same city council specifically, and they are still in the same hybrid mode. We will continue surveying around. We'll see what comes out of those surveys. The governor also has just passed bills that allow remote participation under certain circumstances. And our city attorney has prepared a great chart that shows us what has to happen when one of you would like to remotely participate. So we will have some sort of a hybrid as a standard option available to us. But we will continue to survey, and then hopefully, sooner or later, we'll take all the masks off and see our beautiful faces again.
So is the city attorney's assessment something that she can just send to us? Because I don't see it as an attachment here.
Yeah, just presuming for your response, I just want to say, we analyzed what the law was doing. And it's an internal chart that we created, what we believe the governor's intentions are in. It was not attached to this meeting because it has nothing to do with the current agenda report. I just wanted to give you an outlook because you asked what will happen in the future. So I'm trying to address that as well, but with that, to the city attorney.
Okay, great. I guess it's just because we all serve on different boards. So we're all tracking sort of the same topic. And I know the governor is still signing bills, so I know there's some pending legislation. So I don't want to drag it down. So if Chrissy, you could send the council your thought in terms of the status of the bills that the governor has signed, or if you know the signaling of how the Brown Act may be potentially amended. I think that would be helpful.
Yes, I will do so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And Mayor, that's the only thing I had on item number four.
Okay, and unless there was anyone else, I'll just make my motion again. Was there a second?
I had seconded.
I thank your councilmember, Alan. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Aye.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson? And Mayor Robertson?
Yes, Carrie's 5-0. All right, we're going to do a little magic here and adjourn to the Ocean View Community Services District Meeting. Do we have any updates or reports to make?
There's nothing to report in addition to the report in the packet.
Thank you. Then we'll just receive the report and go adjourn back to the city council meeting. Our first public appearance item is to consider a union request to reclassify a street maintenance worker position as a Green Belt Coordinator. And so this is as a result of Section 29 of the GEM Memorandum of Understanding. The city council is to consider the recommendation of the Human Resources Department and the rebuttal by GEM and make a determination. The city council's decision is final. So going back to our valiant city manager, I have a feeling that you are going to punt this, but we'll send it to you, please.
Mr. Mayor, Gina Russo will present to the city council.
Okay, thank you. And I want to just clarify with our valued city attorney, that's the correct procedure we hear from HR and then the rebuttal from GEM and then back to the council?
Correct.
Thank you. You'd think I'd know that by now, but we see so few of these, I didn't know. Thank you.
And sometimes it's a different order, so you're justified in asking.
Oh. All right. Welcome, Gina. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So what we have before you is based on Section 29 of the GEM. You allows for a provision for GEM employees to submit reclassification requests. It's once a year, it's between September and October. What they do is they submit, there's multiple forms that are required. HR reviews the forms, meets with the employee, the union representative, meets with the division supervisors, the department head, confers with the city manager's office to make a determination. In this case, the original request came in not specifying what the reclassification was for. It just said a different position, a higher position, but it didn't specify. It was denied, HR denied it. The union then has the right to provide a rebuttal, in which case they did, in which case they will, they will present before you today. So in the rebuttal is when they did declare that they wanted it to be reclassified to that Green Belt Coordinator position. So that was the first time we saw that was in the rebuttal. So our recommendation is to deny that as well. Oh, Mayor, you're muted.
Thank you, Gina. There's a certain rat terrier who was, I don't know who she belongs, it's my wife's, who wanted to participate. I'll tell you a funny story about that later under council comments. But anyway, Chrissy, should we ask questions now? Wait for the rebuttal, then ask questions if we have any?
Either way, it would be fine, whatever's easiest.
All right, any questions from the council at this point for Gina?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, please, Councilmember Alan.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if Gina can expand a bit on explaining kind of the rationale for why the request for the Green Belt Coordinator position is not being recommended?
Okay.
Yeah, so in the documentation that was provided, again, originally, Green Belt Coordinator was not the position that was being discussed. But in the original documentation that was provided, the employee stated that 40% of their job was in forestry. Their position is a street maintenance worker. But according to their documentation, they said 40% was in forestry, 40% was in street maintenance, and 20% was operating the aerial bucket truck. So in meeting with both the department and the division and the supervisors, that is in dispute, those percentages are not agreed upon. We do contract out, back in 2010, we did have a forestry department that included tree trimmers, tree maintenance workers. There was a whole tree maintenance division that was eliminated. At that time, we did start contracting out that work. So we dispute that that is accurate. Also, you know, to be reclassed, it has to be a majority of the time, right? So the duties need to be the majority. So if there was something that was done, 5% or something occasionally, that isn't going to constitute or justify a reclassification. It has to be primarily the duties that are outside. So that was, that was the kind of the main determination.
And if I could just follow up, how do we calculate those percentages? Or is that just sort of based on the manager's, you know, the manager's notion of what somebody is doing? Is there anything formal in terms of how we track people's time?
Yeah, so there are work orders that are associated with any time an employee goes out to do, particularly in the streets and parks and the maintenance divisions. There are work orders that are associated with their duties.
Thank you, Gina.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, please, Councilmember Dan.
So you actually answered my first question, and that was, is it, is it past practice that we grant reclassification for half a responsibility? And I think that you've already answered that, thank you, I appreciate that. Does this mean that if the reclassification, we grant the reclassification to the employee, he will, he will no longer, he will no longer perform the maintenance worker's duties and he'll be full-time as a? Yeah.
Yeah, Green Belt Coordinator, yes, that is, that would be, that would be what a reclassification is. He would be not working in his current classification as street maintenance worker. It would now be this new classification.
So that would mean that we'd have an open position for the, for the maintenance worker then, I would assume, to replace him?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and then so my last question is, do we or are we projecting that this position will ever be open?
So interestingly enough, this position was just reapproved in this budget, which you approved in July, July 1. So we actively are recruiting for this position and this employee is actually in the process and is actively competing for the position, so.
All right, great, that answers my question, thank you.
Good, any other questions? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you for that vigilant report, Gina. And we certainly look forward to hearing from the union representative, please. This is your opportunity for your rebuttal.
So I believe we have Mr. Fisher here with us. Mr. Fisher, you should be able to go ahead.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can, thank you. At least I can, I hope everybody else can.
My first time appearing via Zoom before the, for the council. So, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members, it's really my pleasure to provide some very brief points in rebuttal, which have been raised and, and very importantly, were just kind of touched on by council member questions. Before I get into my colloquy, I want to thank Ms. Bonner, by the way, for being very stalwart in assisting us in providing documentation to the council and making sure everything is available for the council members and your honor, the mayor, to take a look at the points that we're basically making here. The main point that we want to make here is it's a very human, I love the way the council started its meeting day by recognizing the men and women who've served and by underscoring how important that is. Elizor Munoz, Mr. Munoz is a talented, experienced forestry worker. Pebble Beach, for the city. He fells large trees. He climbs large trees and cuts them down safely. And anyone who has any experience in that world knows that takes a highly qualified individual with a very high skill set. And that's, that's Mr. Munoz. Now, the record that the council has in its file leaves no doubt that Mr. Munoz does, has done and continues to do forestry work and work in an aerial bucket, electrical work in an aerial bucket that requires electrical license that he does not possess. He's basically, because he's highly skilled and highly experienced, he's basically since the forestry department was closed back in 2011, he has been called upon to perform highly skilled functions in his position as a street maintenance worker, even though none of those duties that he's been performing are identified within the classification of the street maintenance worker. Now, Ms. Bonner was kind enough to communicate with me and at this time, I'd like to present to the, to your honor, the mayor and the council members, a very short video that in conjunction with two declarations that were signed under penalty of perjury by Shay Ballistieri and Mike Gentry, who have personal knowledge that Mr. Munoz is doing this kind of work regularly, I think will leave no doubt that Mr. Munoz is actually doing this work. And Ms. Bonner, if you're prepared, it might be a good time to. Also, I had a question, may I continue to make comments during the video?
It's a noisy video, but I can play it with the sound off if that would be preferable.
No, I think it might be better to leave the sound on and I'll just, I'll do what lawyers don't like to do and I'll be quiet.
All right, hold on one second. Here we go.
Okay, may I continue with my comments?
Oh, Mayor, you're muted.
The dog again, and interestingly enough, there's somebody's cutting trees in the background as we speak. You can't make this stuff up, Mr. Fisher, how much more time do you need, sir?
Just a few minutes, your honor.
All right, please go ahead.
Anyone who's ever cut a tree or seen a tree cut knows that that little passage there was fraught with a whole host of things that could have gone wrong, hitting the building, hitting the equipment, hitting the workers. So I just think that was a very good visual, you know, picture paints a thousand words. It's important to note that what basically, this is a story of a talented man who, when a city eliminated the forestry department, began to be used in ways that were inappropriate because of the skill set. And so as we point out in our rebuttal, Mr. Munoz continues to provide forestry maintenance citywide, including at the Presidio. And just so you'll know, the picture, the video we just saw is a perfect example of what Mr. Munoz is supposedly not supposed to do and doesn't do. This tree fell and he did was next to the barracks in the Presidio. It was never permitted, it was never documented in a work order. Now, the crux of management's rejection of this reclassification petition is basically, hey, we don't have any evidence that Mr. Munoz is doing these duties. We don't have any documentation that he's doing this kind of bucket work or cutting down trees. Why? Because they don't have the work order. Well, the response to that is, that's because the city has not been keeping proper records. In fact, as we, as we tried to point out in the attachment, attachment two of our rebuttal, we actually have a picture of the work order. This is on page six of the attachment two. And you can see there that there are, your honor and council members, a number of activities that my client could have been asked to perform. And exactly none of them are, you know, cutting down trees, trimming large, you know, fallen trees, going up into a bucket to do sign work or light work or whatnot. And yet, we know for a fact through the video you just watched, the hundreds, the hundreds of photographs that my client and his colleagues started taking because his claims were being denied over and over again. Why? Because he couldn't justify the time showing that he was doing these duties outside of his classification. So what happens? They start taking pictures. They take a video. Those are all in the council's records now to take a look at. And one of the problems was, when you go back and say, well, show, show to me, Mr. Munoz, that you were doing these things at the Presidio. He can't do it because we don't have a structure in place through the work order to capture exactly what he was doing. So bottom line, the management has twice refused to justify this reclassification on the theory that he doesn't have evidence. And the answer is, yeah, that's right. It's right because you don't have the proper work order forms. And management either deliberately or negligently was allowing Mr. Munoz to perform these functions without proper documentation. And at the end of the day, we were simply asked that the council, please take a look at the link that we provided, hundreds of photos or so, demonstrating that Mr. Munoz undoubtedly performs Green Belt Coordinator duties. He goes up into a bucket, a work that is highly skilled, that formerly used by a city electrician at a much higher pay rate. And that at the end of the day, you know, if we value workers and their contribution, this man who has been plying his highly skilled trade for the city and its environs since 2005, he deserves to be recognized as such. And the reclassification for him to the Green Belt Coordinator position is just improper. And I submit on that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fisher. And obviously, all of the things are in the public record and we appreciate that. Any questions from the council for Mr. Fisher? I don't hear or see any.
No, Mayor, I don't have questions for Mr. Fisher, but I do have some for staff.
Yes, okay, so what we'll do is just thank Mr. Fisher for his comments and we'll bring it back to the council. And let's see, I think before the council probably wants to discuss this, we would want to see if there's any public comment in the chambers now?
No public comments in council chambers, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you. And Clementine, anyone online with regard to this reclassification request?
Nobody has raised their hands, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'll close any public comment at that point. Bring it back to questions, Councilmember Tyler, please. All right, I'll close any public comment at that point. Bring it back to questions. Council member Tyler, please.
So is this a full-time position?
The green belt coordinator is a full-time position that we restored with the most recent, uh, council action for our 22, 23 budget.
Uh. Street maintenance worker position?
Mike, please.
Yes, the street maintenance worker position is a full-time position as well.
Okay, and then, so assuming that, um. Work orders are submitted to reflect the work that's being done. Do the work orders that are submitted for this, for the person that's filling this position show. Um, a level of work or an amount of work that fills a full-time position? That are duties not being identified, um, in the request?
Uh, Congressman Willis, um, let me rephrase the question so, so that, that I. I'm able to, to respond to you. Talking about the green belt coordinator position.
The street maintenance worker.
It's okay, so, so thank you. A street maintenance worker, uh, works in various scenarios. Uh, they, they work in a, on, in the streets, they work in storm drains, they work in, in sewers. Uh, they do fence repairs and they also from time to time. Uh, take, uh, branches of trees that, that are blocking something or have to be done. The rule usually is that anything larger than two inches, uh, has to be called in and goes to. Uh, our forestry division and, uh, the forest division takes care of that and the green belt.
Sorry, real quick, let me just clarify. So the position that Mr. Munoz is in.
Is in streets.
Right, okay, so the, is the work that he does for his full-time position recorded in these work orders that are submitted? And that, and that equates to showing that he's doing full-time work in the street work, uh, the street maintenance worker position? They're fully accounted for within those work orders?
Yes, so, so I, I, I have not looked at all of his work orders, but I, I know that. His work orders are created in streets and are part of street maintenance work orders that contain this whole scope that I just described.
Okay.
Green belt coordinator position is a position not within streets and is a position in the urban forestry division.
Okay, and then the last question, um. Does management agree or disagree with the videos? The video that was shown in the pictures showing that Mr. Munoz is doing the type of work that's being argued?
So I, I really have, um, heartburn with that video. Uh, first of all, it's not dated. We, we, we don't know when this video was taken. We, we, we believe it was taken at the end of 2020. Uh, at that time, or shortly thereafter, Mr. Munoz was told not to work anymore in, in forestry functions. Um, what you see in the video also gives me grave concern because you see Mr. Munoz working completely. Uh, without safety precautions. Uh, that, uh, the tree is, is, is falling. There is no tree escape route. You see no PPA. PPE on the individual there who, uh, who is being presented as Mr. Munoz. Um, you, you see basically a, a job that is being conducted, um, not in the way, uh. A skilled forestry tree team would, would conduct it. So, um, uh, this, this video gives me grave concerns and as part of that. Uh, to the best of my knowledge and as we pointed out in the, uh, agenda report. Mr. Munoz was told he has to discontinue this type of work. And, um, that was made, I believe sometime in February, March, 2021. Uh, keep in mind also what is in front of you is a reclassification request for, for the past year where he, uh, put in for that. In, um, in, uh, February 21. At that time, he was told not to pull. Those kind of stunts anymore because again, they were not safe. They were not permitted. There was no forester on site who allowed the cutting of that tree, et cetera. So, um. That were, are all, uh, thoughts also that, that I wanted to share with you after seeing the video.
That's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'm sorry about having to go in and out of the mute. Yeah, after, after, uh, I'm sorry, was that council member Ed?
Yeah, a question, yeah, a question I have is. Uh, so in the staff report, it is, uh, talking about the conversation. Uh, and, and restated by Mr. Usler just now that the employee was given instructions not to perform. Um, the question I have is, um, that, that we believe was in March of 2021. And that, uh, since then, the public works has been monitoring closely assignments in the streets division. And can assure that the work assigned to and performed by Munus is within the streets maintenance work classification. He is, can somebody tell me if any of the evidence that's presented in their documentation? Has any date stamps or evidence that that work was after March 2021?
Uh, yes, and I'll ask, uh, our, our public works director to, to chime in there. Uh, we had limited time to look at all the, the, the 151 or so photographs that were submitted to us. But, uh, we, we, we found a few and I wanted to ask Andrea to briefly characterize them as the Congressman Willi- uh, Congressman Smith is asking for.
Thank you. Good evening again. Um, we did look at the photos and there are a couple of the photos that showed, uh, some tree branch work. That was related to a work order from the Presidio of Monterey. I did talk to, uh, the street maintenance lead worker that was there as well as, uh, the two streets and utility supervisors. Uh, those small branches were impeding access to a sidewalk. And so Hector Fernandez, who was the street maintenance lead worker, cut those branches. Um, they were all under an inch and a half as, um, our city manager has mentioned. And Elia Zar helped load those into the truck. So we do, I did have a long conversation with the streets and utilities operation manager. The supervisors and lead workers and they have attested that there has been. Zero assignments, uh, since at least April of this year to the aerial bucket truck. And just as a note, the bucket truck does, is not usually used more than, uh, two hours a week. And it can be used for signs and, and other, um, other work. It's not just for electrical work. It's not used in fact for electrical work right now. Um, also, uh, tree work zero percent of the time. Uh, at least since the request for a reclassification was submitted on October 10th, 2021. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um. Then we'll come back to the council and I'll make a motion to deny.
Pardon my interruption, mayor. Um, we should open up to general public comment.
I did that already.
Oh, he, uh, okay, I'm sorry. Um, Mr. Frazier has his hand raised and he should have the opportunity to respond to the general public comment and also to the. Additional information just provided by staff.
Okay, thank you.
Ask one last question.
Yeah, please, uh, and, and, yeah, um, please do.
Um, is, is there anything that's reflected in the performance appraisal that identifies, uh. The behavior around issues with, uh, executing work that wasn't in, within the, uh, the duties?
Uh, I don't know that. I'm asking, uh, Gino.
I do not know that. Um, off the top of my head, I don't.
All right, let's, um, Mr. Fisher, if you could take a couple minutes, please, for rebuttal, we'll give you three minutes.
Okay, I appreciate that, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, of course.
Uh, yeah, just, just, just very briefly, um. We, we've just heard comments that there were concerns about how, uh, the tree was being felled. Whether there was protective gear being worn, uh, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, we would agree with that. We would agree with that. We would say the reason why there's a problem in this regard. Uh, it was referred to as stunts, uh, by, by Mr. Munoz. The reality is, uh, Hector and other third-party contractors. Uh, that, that have been brought in to do, uh, the work that the forestry department previously did. They have no problem pressing someone, um, like Mr. Munoz into service to, to, uh, take down certain trees, do forestry work. Jump in the bucket and, and do, and do work of that type. Uh, even if it isn't technically appropriate and safeguards aren't being taken. That, that's the whole point. Of my client's position. The whole point is, a street maintenance worker has no business being asked to do this kind of work. Uh, which, uh, which the evidence, uh, in the record shows that he's been, he's been asked to do. He's been asked to do a number of things that are outside of the classification of the street maintenance worker. Uh, so if, if we submit a video that shows a tree is being felled that rightfully belongs, uh, in the area of, of a cream, uh, green belt coordinator. Uh, and my client is actually doing it. We have two affidavits submitted. I mean, the, the council would have to conclude, uh, that these two individuals. Uh, Shay Ballasteri and Mike Gentry are, are, are lying, are perjuring themselves in a declaration. Because they say, we, we've seen him do forestry work. We, we've seen him in a bucket. And those things are inappropriate, uh, for a street maintenance worker. Um, so these were not stunts. These were things that my client has been asked to do. Because he has the expertise to do them. Uh, so, uh, I would just again, circle back and say, look at the photos, look at the declarations. Uh, look at the, um, evidence in attachment two. And, uh, I, I believe, I believe it's just improper, uh, given this man's unblemished. You know, uh, the impression was left, he's, you know, he's kind of going cowboy here. Uh, well, the council member's question most recently was if he's going rogue on cutting down trees. Where's the discipline? Where's the feedback? So the city wants it both ways. They want the work done. They don't want to pay my client, uh, what he's entitled to make, uh, as a green belt coordinator. Uh, and then when he brings up the reclassification, he's denied. Anyway, I'll put it there and I really appreciate, uh, your honor and, uh, the council for, uh, allowing me to, uh, provide my comments.
Yeah, Mr. Fisher, just as a clarification as you were speaking. Uh, did I hear you say that, uh, Mr. Munoz might. Under the direction of an outside private contractor would get in the, would participate in the removing of the tree at their direction? Is that what you said?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, that's exactly what I said.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right, back to the council. And, and so, uh, what's your pleasure, everybody? You know, hearing, uh. I don't mind going ahead and making a motion to deny the reclassification and.
Mr. Mayor, we have, sure if we have some folks in the chamber who want to speak, I don't know if it's appropriate for them to speak.
Well, I, I did open the public comment, I believe, to the chamber as well as the, uh, unless I'm. Uh, I had a brain fog there. But are there people in the chamber who wanted to speak? Are you telling me?
So, so, uh, the rebuttal was done by your attorney a second ago, Shay. Uh, they are asking if they can rebut and, and, uh, I just wanted to clarify that, uh, Mr. Fisher was doing the rebuttal on, on their behalf. As, as you are his client, so. But I, I'll leave it up to the wisdom of the council.
The, the council can reopen it and allow them to speak if it wishes.
Okay, well, I can certainly do that, but I've just heard, Mr. Fisher, I don't understand. There's no, you don't, nobody has to answer this. I don't understand why a city employee would be doing work as directed by a private tree contractor. I don't understand that whatsoever. Oh, so let's see if there's comment, uh, there's comment in the council chambers. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'm gonna limit it to two minutes if I may because we're getting very close to adjournment, so we can have, uh. Uh, comments from the public for two minutes, please. Let's go ahead. Come on up. We'd like to hear what you have to say.
Uh, yes, sir. My name's Shay Ballasteri. I'm the chairperson for the Jim Board of City Monterey. And, uh, just enlightening some of the comments and questions. Um, I just thought it would be appropriate since El Azar is here, if you guys had some of the questions that it seemed to got a little bit confusing or. Going cowboy or rogue. If you, you wanted to ask those questions, you could ask him directly. He's here. I mean, we've made, made the gentleman made his rebuttal, but it seems to me that if you have any pertinent questions that you can answer directly to you.
Okay, thank you for that. And did the council have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, may, may I ask a question of, of Mr. Munos?
Yeah, yes.
And I appreciate the offering. We, we, you know, this is, this is somewhat complicated, but we want to be in all fairness. Sure we cover the facts.
Sure.
So I want to ask you, um, is it your understanding with your streets worker position? That you have been instructed by a supervisor to not act as a forester? To not get the bucket truck and not cut trees? Have you had that instructions from your supervisor?
Uh, I'm, I'm real sorry, like before you respond, normally we have the people in the chambers together and I'm just want to get. Confirmation from the attorney if he's still on Zoom that he has no objection to direct questioning of his client. Um, doubts is in this fashion. Is this okay, Mr. Fisher?
Oh, yes, I welcome the, uh, the colloquy.
Okay, thank you for that.
Uh, no, sir.
So can you answer council member Ed's question, please?
Yeah, yeah, he, he did. And so a follow-up question is, I want to make sure I understand. Are you saying that you've never had a supervisor from the city of Monterey in your chain? Tell you that you were not to cut trees or act in the performance of a forestry position?
No.
You've never had a supervisor tell you that?
No.
Have you ever had anything written notifying you that?
No.
Have you ever had a comment in your evaluation regarding?
No.
Okay, um, and how long have you been a street worker, uh, in a position of a street worker?
Uh, 10 years.
And prior to that 10 years, were you a forester? Did you work in the forestry department?
Uh, before I came to streets, I worked for forestry department. That's where I started with City Monterey.
Okay, so you've been in your current position, which is, um, street.
Maintenance worker for 10 years.
For 10 years?
Yeah.
Okay, and is it typical that a, a street worker would have a chainsaw with them as part of their equipment?
Uh, no.
Okay, and do you have a chainsaw that you carry with you in your truck?
We have three chainsaws that were, uh, given to streets by foresters.
Okay, but you don't normally carry that with you in your truck?
No, everything stays at the yard. Everything's in, in, in a container. I don't, I just show up like I am right here, just with the lunchbox.
Okay, and, and if you were to show up and there's a tree, how would you acquire the equipment to cut that tree as we saw in the video?
Well, I show up in the morning at eight o'clock and I get orders from my supervisor. Then I go up in the Presidio where Hector Fernandez is the lead worker and I get orders from him.
Okay. And, and are you saying that you've never been told not to cut trees with your, uh, chainsaw?
I never have been told. And we have been as HR over and over, never came up.
Okay.
I've got counsel.
If, if I can, uh, so, and. Who, who is telling you to cut trees? Is your, do you have a supervisor that tells you to cut these trees? Do you have, is, is it the contractors that are telling you to do this work? It's a combination with supervisor and the gentleman in charge of the Presidio Monterey. Okay, thank you. There's no contractor involved.
Okay, so when you say the gentleman in charge of the Presidio, what does that mean?
That means is the lead worker up in the Presidio.
Okay, is that person a city employee?
City employee. He works in our department.
Okay, okay, so a city employee that works in your department that's assigned to the Presidio.
Yeah.
And does that individual have a supervisory responsibility?
Uh, it all depends, uh, cause he gets his order, uh, he gets orders in the morning like I do from our supervisor.
Okay, would you consider that person to be a peer or a supervisor?
Uh, both.
Um, oh, okay, so does that person have the same classification in, in a job as you do?
Uh, no, he's higher.
So he's, he's a hu- higher position in, in the streets department?
Yes. I'm a street maintenance worker and he's a lead worker.
Okay, okay, I, I understand.
Two tiers up.
Okay, I understand.
And I get my orders from him.
Okay.
From the last eight years, because I, I'm based out of the Presidio as a worker.
Okay, and, uh, almost done here.
Sure.
When, when's the last time you physically used a chainsaw at work when you were working as a, um. A streets maintenance worker?
Uh, I would say about. Four months ago or so.
So the, the last time you used the chainsaw would have been four months ago?
Yes.
And, and typically, if you were to use the chainsaw. And and typically, if you were to use the chainsaw, would that be to cut a tree down or would that be to trim branches?
Uh trim branches.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what when's the last time you cut a tree down that would be, say, um larger than uh four inches?
Uh. Pretty much everything I cut up there is over the four inch branch or trees.
Okay, so a a tree from the ground, larger than four inches?
About six months ago.
Okay, and it would it be unusual that you would be cutting a tree that would be six inches? A a growth of a tree from the ground that you would be cutting that tree? Not trimming the branches, but cutting the tree.
Cutting the tree. So can you repeat that question again?
Yeah, would it be unusual for you to be cutting a tree that's larger than six inches?
Uh no.
Would not be unusual. Okay, and when's the last time you cut something larger than six inches that that's a tree?
About six months ago.
About six months ago, okay. And since that six months, have you been given any notice to not do that?
The only notice I. Found out is that all the chainsaws are. They're in the room that are hidden, that they're not out where all the regular tools are or daily tools are at the yard.
Okay, so you have not cut with a chainsaw for the last six months?
About four four months.
About four months.
Four.
Okay, and since that time, you you don't have access to a chainsaw?
At all.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any more questions? Well, thanks so much for uh answering our questions. We appreciate that. Back to the council.
I I need to correct um the the some of the impressions that that Mr. Munoz meant. He was advised in writing uh on April twenty second by the HR director to not use a chainsaw. And he might have just forgotten that memo that was sent to him. And he was advised also verbally according to our uh chain of command in streets. Uh in in the last time, I believe in in March of this year, not to use chainsaws anymore. So um I I understand that there were previous occasions where he was uh using the chainsaw. But we became aware of of all the surrounding issues and what is in front of you, counsel, right now is a reclassification request. And the uh the person that is in front of you will not work as a forester, will not work as a green belt coordinator in the streets division. Uh and as Mr. Munoz pointed out, he hasn't used the chainsaw for four months. He's part of the green belt uh interview process that is coming up sooner or later. Um here, but uh they just want to focus the council back that there was a written direction given to him, I believe, on April twenty second. In uh in this year by HR Director Allison Hulk, and that he was also repeatedly told by his immediate chain of command, including the the street. Maintenance lead worker on the procedure to stop uh doing uh semi forestry work. So I just cannot let uh the council believe that staff didn't do all that.
Thank you for the clarification. All right, back to the council. I'll make a motion to deny the reclassification and support the recommendation of the HR department. Second, we have a second.
Yeah, under discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Did we get a second?
Yeah, I think Dan did.
I did.
Thank you. Yes, please go ahead, Councilmember Allen. Sorry, I'm not there in person, but.
No problem. So I I see three kind of, I guess, issues or questions. One is the reclass, and that's obviously the one that is the motion before us.
Yes.
You also see a question about. Uh whether work assignments are being properly assigned within a person's classification and and whether sort of proper supervision. Ensuring that the proper work is being done and improper work's not being done. And then just the accounting of work orders. So I don't believe there's enough evidence to show that more than fifty percent of the work being done. By Mr. Munoz is in uh is in forestry management, so I'm gonna support the motion. But I do think, and I want to personally send a message, I think this is something management needs to look into. I don't think Mr. Munoz is lying. I think he is being asked to do out of class work. And I don't think uh I I don't think that's um the way we should be doing things. So I think we do need to look at how work is being assigned and supervised and how work orders are being accounted for in that area. And I would also urge him to apply for the job, uh you know, and go through that process. That's a whole nother. That's a whole nother uh way, no whole nother process here.
Thank you, Alan. Any other comments, discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, I I'll just add that I appreciate Alan's comments. I made a big. Sorry, uh I I was just saying, I I agree with Alan's comments. I I appreciate them. The fact that we can't prove through what we've been provided that the work is greater than fifty percent. I think raises a valid point in regards to the motion. Um but I do want to give appreciation to Mr. Munoz for coming out publicly and putting himself out there. Um hopefully, this doesn't have an effect on uh him making an effort at applying for this position. And 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 I hope that um the best candidate gets selected for that. Um but I I I agree that this has to do with some level of accountability in regards to the work that's being expected. It's a little bit disappointing that there wasn't information that kind of proves or shows that the work. Um that he is being assigned or expected to do um is not something that we can validate or prove with any documentation. So um hopefully, that can be something that is is reconciled. Um and yeah, I I I'll support the motion.
All right, any other comments, Councilmember Down or Councilmember Ed?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Down, please.
So in uh my past life, I've done quite a few uh reclassifications. And reclassifications are always a an employee that um takes the full responsibility of that particular position. It's always been that, at least that's what it's been. That's why I asked the question if that was the past practice of our own uh city. That um if it if it's half responsibility, is that considered a reclass? Cause in what I've been involved in, it's never been a reclass uh in that in that type of position. Uh however, uh in in those same, in the same vein, there's always been documentation on how many hours that person actually worked in that reclass. So I I follow up with that that same comment that um maybe we need to look at our practices on how we do. Uh record the hours um as as both Tyler and Alan mentioned. I think that's something our our uh our department should look at. But uh I I do support the recommendation based on that um. That it wasn't a full-time position uh that he was uh that he was put into. So um to me, that's not considered reclassification for me.
Okay, uh yeah, thank you. Councilmember Ed, any final word?
Yeah, fin- final word. Um I I just want to say for for me, I think, Alan, you you centralized the three key points. And for me, uh I'm gonna support the motion because there's just not enough of a percentage. I'm not gonna get involved in whether it's the proof or whether we believe you or whether we believe the city. That that's not really the issue for me. Um but I I do encourage you to, you know, pursue that other position. Because it sounds like that you've got the experience and you're well qualified for that. Uh I understand the point of employees that, you know, especially when it's a physical job, stuff happens. You're there, you just do it, and you're trying to help the overall mission and effort of the city. Uh to help protect public safety and you're trying to just do your job. So I I commend you for that. Um but there but there are some lines where you just have to say, well, that's not, I can't do that, and you gotta call. But I want to say in this process, thank you for enduring the line of questioning. But because this is going the way it is, don't let this hamper um your spirit and your encouragement to to do a great job. And to work for the city. We we appreciate what you do. Um but by this ruling not uh giving you what you're after. I I hope you'll understand that this part of this is uh we have to apply the rules. We have to look at the percentages. We have to look at overall uh the amount of uh time and effort you do in your job versus that other job. Um so please don't let this hamper your spirit. I hope that you understand where we're coming from. Uh that we appreciate all your efforts, but you're not in forestry business. You're in the street maintenance work for now. And so uh we would encourage you to keep that spirit up and thank you for your hard work and your diligence. I also had a time when I did somebody else's assignment and I went over the line. And I got pulled back and I got chastised. And it was like, that is not your job. Don't do that. Stay out of that. Um if that hasn't been clear, I think it's clear tonight that your your job is in the maintenance department. Um and we appreciate the work that you do there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, actually, I I'm just sitting here thinking about this more and I'm actually struggling a little bit. I I actually, I don't think I can support the motion. Uh I mean, it is not clear. We're we're making a claim that fifty percent of his work isn't in the forestry and and actually, because of what everybody has just said. It's not clear what the percentage is. So we're making a claim that his current classification is appropriate. When it sounds like there needs to be an evaluation of exactly what his work is to determine what the classification should be, whether it meets fifty percent or not. It sounds like if you're cutting trees down that are greater than the six inches or whatever that expectation is, that it should still be in the classification. So it's clear regards to what those duties are. Now, whether that raises to the level of a change in title. I think that can be a conversation, but um I think the fact that there's not clarity around exactly what it is that he does. And and that we all have just acknowledged that there there needs to be a change in in management practices around capturing work being done. I can't support the motion as it is.
I want to uh ask, I just want to, okay, let's do the rule.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Williamson?
No.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes, that passes four to one. Thank you. Interesting discussion. There was one more afternoon, excuse me, uh yeah, one more afternoon. Item, if it's gonna turn into a long discussion, we'll continue it, but let's see if it's something that we can do um expediently. And that's to authorize amendment to the City Attorney Employment Agreement. Uh Hans, did we have uh we have a written uh presentation? I don't know if we need anything done orally.
Most of my your negotiator, Jay is online and maybe Jay can summarize it in thirty seconds or less.
Okay, let's do that. Shay, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. Before you is an amendment to the city attorney's contract. To bring her contract in line with the recent agreements that were negotiated for city employees. Um uh as the mayor has indicated, it's late in the day and time is of the essence. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. It's it's basically um bringing the city attorney uh with in line with the other MOUs. That we've given our various uh labor groups. Uh coun- council questions? All right, public comment in the chambers?
No, Mr. Mayor.
And public comment online?
No, sir.
All right, are you someone ready to make a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, under discussion, I want to point out that lawyers, uh uh private lawyers are charging. Well, six, seven, eight, I've even heard over a thousand dollars, six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars per hour. And we have, I think, I said we have the best police department in the country. I will say we have the best city attorney in the country as well. So it's it's a real pleasure to support this motion. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Uh she's accepting the uh the raise, right? I saw her shaking her head, yes. So my vote is.
And Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Well, I thought I said yes.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Albert, I'm mixing myself up here.
Yes.
Okay, and Mayor Roberson?
And yes, and that's it. So uh five oh, and uh thank you very much, City Attorney and and Shay for helping us with this. Keep her here.
I didn't get it.
And I think it was a twenty-five year extension, as I recall.
Mr. Mayor, we need to continue the two closed session items into the evening, please.
Yes, okay, well, if we don't adjourn to it, we I don't think we have to continue. We're not gonna, whatever.
Do we need to take action?
Yeah, it it under the agenda today, it was separately.
Okay.
Specifically at four, so if you could continue it to the evening, that'd be great.
So do we have to have a motion? Cause then I I will move to continue the two closed session items to this evening.
Can I, really quick, I'm sorry, I'm I'm seeing, oh, the two afternoon ones. Um ours will be about thirty seconds and we've got Shay here, so is there any way we could get ours in?
Yes, we can if it's thirty seconds like he did last time.
Okay, that's right.
But you, you know what, by the time we adjourn, reopen again, it's gonna be ten minutes anyway. I'm sorry, we're just gonna have to uh. Uh we really need to adjourn otherwise, uh I mean, to recess. Otherwise, it just it goes on and on and on and on and.
So you can devote on the motion, though.
Yeah, we have the motion to continue to this evening in a second, I believe. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Albert?
Yeah, there was a second.
Was there?
Yeah.
Dan?
I have a second from Councilmember Smith.
Sorry, I didn't hear.
Okay.
Uh well, I had seconded. Are are we doing roll call now?
I think so.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Uh yes, so we'll take a recess and see everybody at uh seven. Thank you so much.
Welcome back to our council meeting, everybody. And so, first item of business is going to be the Pledge of Allegiance. So we're going to ask our valuable City Clerk Clementine to put a flag up for us over Colton Hall as our custom, I hope. Thank you. Let's join me in the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, in the name of America, and to the public, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Clementine. So continued public comments. This allows anybody in the public who did not speak this afternoon to share with us this evening anything that would be not on the agenda. If it's an agenda item, we ask that you wait and we'll be glad to have public comment for our, should be very interesting presentations this evening. And please, within the jurisdiction of the city of Monterey, you have three minutes. So we'll open it up and do we have anyone in the council chambers who would like to talk to the council this evening?
Yes, Mayor Robinson, we do.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robinson and members of the city council. I'm Luis Osorio. I'm here to offer some follow-up comments to the comments I made a couple of weeks ago regarding the application process for the, for the planning commission position that is currently open. At the time, prior to that meeting, I had requested some information from the city clerk's office, which was provided to me. It appeared at the time that the appointment to the planning commission was going to be on September 20th. That didn't happen. But the appointments to the library board did happen on September 20th. I requested following up to that meeting information on who the applicants were that applied to the planning commission. And the information that was provided by the city clerk revealed that one of the applicants for the city, for the planning commission was also an applicant to the library board. Since the library board appointment was made, I believe, two weeks ago, I have to think that the member that applied for the library board was interviewed. So I requested the information on when that interview had taken place and whether the person that also applied for the planning commission had undergone her interview for the planning commission as well. Well, last Friday, the city clerk office communicated to me that they don't have any information on when and how the interviews for the library board took place and who set them up. The guidelines state that the city clerk office will arrange and schedule interviews with the mayor and the applicants. So, but they don't have information for when those interviews took place. And then on Friday or a couple of days ago, Clementine informed me that the mayor was going to make a statement tonight or today saying that he was going to recommend that the planning commission position not be appointed and to wait until after the election. And that the mayor was going to make an statement today. So I don't know if the statement was made already this afternoon or if the mayor is going to make the statement tonight as to why the process for interviews and the appointment to the planning commission is not going to be made anymore until after the election. I mean, it's just for clarity because it's confusing. I mean, it's just for clarity because it's confusing. I'm not here to make any political statements or anything. That's not my style, but I think Clyde, you need to clarify some of these questions for the public. Thank you.
That is all public comment in the chamber.
Here we go. My little dog, I have to mute sometimes. Sorry, y'all. So Clementine, anybody online tonight?
We do have a small handful here. So first, here from a telephone caller with the last three digits, nine zero two. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. My name is Nina Beatty. Next week is National Fire Prevention Week, October 9th through 15th. One of the biggest fire risks in this community are the PG&E smart meters on every home and building. My 50 page report on fire and electrical hazards of smart meters and digital utility meters explains why and is on my website, smartmeterharm.org for a free download. PG&E and the CPUC ignored expert safety warnings on smart meters. In contrast to the analog meters, which are resilient, PG&E that PG&E removed, smart meters don't have adequate surge protection and smart meters don't have a direct connection to ground. Smart meters are vulnerable to surges and though they normally and often malfunction normally in over voltage conditions, they can fail completely, sending high voltage into a building in seconds. The lithium batteries can catch fire and explode as well. Smart meter malfunctions have caused fires, damaged appliances and wiring, and injured and killed people and animals. Smart meters have other serious problems, too. Analog meters don't have these problems and don't have batteries. The good news is that California residents forced in by their opposition, the CPUC to offer an opt out. Renters and homeowners both can opt out of smart meters and get gas and electric analog meters. For regular customers, there's a $75 one time charge and $10 per month charge for three years when it stops. Care and fair customers are charged much less. People can opt out by phone or online at PG&E's easy to find opt out page. The PG&E Vista three fires at Moss Landing and the just released grand jury transcripts on the campfire that PG&E caused and then sued to suppress the grand jury transcripts show again that PG&E cannot be trusted or relied upon for public safety and the public must protect themselves against this company. Please protect yourself, your loved ones, your neighborhood in this community. Opt out of PG&E's dangerous smart meters. This is a good week to do that and stand up to prevent fire in Monterey. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And next I would like to call on Jean Rico Carr. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, council and mayor for this time to share my public comment. There is so much to my story, so much so that I could never address it all in three minutes. But I will address a fair issue in front of this city. I have been subjected to racial discrimination at the hands of the city. And this city's discriminatory bias is continuing to obstruct my ability to be part of one of the biggest in our country. I filed a 26 page claim against this city on September 13th with 90 exhibits of evidence supporting my claim and showing damages. Far too many details to address in a public comment. So I'm available for question by my email, carshimba@gmail.com. And/or you keep up with my journey for justice in real time on Instagram at carshimba. That's C A N S H I M B A. I'll also be making another important public announcement regarding this issue early next month. Thank you again for your time this evening.
All right. Thank you. And there is another hand raised, but I need to point out that on our agenda, it's clear that for these non-agendized matters, the public comments are either in the afternoon or the evening, but not both. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we don't have any further hands raised for speaking in the evening.
Okay, thank you so much. And let's see. No announcements from closed session because we did not get to closed session and am I, I hope I'm not muted. Let me see. Come on.
We hear you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody want to babysit a rat terrier? I don't see any hands raised even by the participants. Okay, no announcements from closed session. We didn't get to it. All right. This should be really, really interesting coming up. We're going to have a couple of presentations with respect to the property at 30 Fisherman's Wharf. Without further ado, I want to go ahead and as I turn it over to our very valiant city manager, I think we're going to have the presentations, which would be followed by questions and then public input, then I think discussion would be deferred to closed session, I believe. Does that sound right? As valued city attorney and city managers, that sounds like the correct procedure?
That sounds absolutely perfect, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so with the public understanding that we'll have two presentations, we'll get some public input. And then at that point, we will go to closed session because we are doing lease negotiations and that is permitted under California law to end the Brown Act to be in closed session. All right, Mr. City Manager, take her away.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight, as the mayor pointed out, the council and the public will have will learn about two proposals that we have received for concession number 30 on municipal walk number one. Our property manager, Jenna Alredy, will provide a brief introduction into the topic. We have prepared a small presentation. All of you had an opportunity over the past 10, 12 months to visit the site. You walked the site with us. We showed you the the building. We showed you the the state of the building and you all have an impression about the the square footage that is there and the very specific opportunities as well as challenges that this site offers on on our municipal wall number one. So with that, I ask Jenna to please start her presentation and afterwards you will hear a presentation from the mark. Did I say something wrong? There's a dog. We have a wild dog outside.
Oh, she got out?
It's not mine.
We have a presentation from Mark Gilbert Enterprises and then San Pedro Fish Market. And with that, Jenna, take it away, please. I take care of the dog.
Thank you, Hans.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
What do you want me to do? Can I move it? All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. This item before you is to receive presentations from Mark Gilbert Enterprises and San Pedro Fish Market on proposals submitted to lease property located at 30 Fisherman's Wharf. Just to get your bearings, 30 Fisherman's Wharf is the third building on the right hand side. As you walk onto the wharf, it's over 17,000 square feet and it has two stories. It's the largest building on the wharf. There's an exterior photo. Current condition. Nice view from the first floor deck, the harbor. And this is the condition that the city received the property in. This was a former dining area overlooking the harbor. This was the former gift shop. And this is the second floor, a portion of the second floor. A brief background, the building was built in 1957 by Salvatore Serito and subject to a ground lease. The most recent ground lease that the city had was with Mr. Serito's two daughters. The property had been subleased by the Serito family for approximately 40 years until the most recent ground lease expired on July 31st of 2021. The city was in negotiations with the prior sublettee and when negotiations were abruptly terminated by the sublettee on July 16th of 2021 and the building was vacated on October 29th of 21. Staff began marketing the property by first entering contracts with a janitorial company, a real estate photographer and videographer to assist with the marketing package, a sign company and a commercial real estate consultant. Staff and the real estate consultant developed a comprehensive leasing package for distribution that included over 100 contacts, interested parties that had contacted the city, local brokers and LoopNet and CoStar, which are web based commercial real estate listing services. The leasing package was released on June 2nd of 2022 and proposals were due on August 5th. The first proposer that you're going to hear from tonight is Mark Gilbert Enterprises, Inc. Mr. Gilbert owns and operates three restaurants on Santa Cruz Wharf, the Firefish Grill, Woody's on the Wharf and Dolphin Restaurant. These businesses have been family owned and operated over the past 14 years. Mr. Gilbert is proposing the Firefish Grill concept for 30 Fisherman's Wharf, which features an exhibition kitchen, a full bar and a gift shop. San Pedro Fish Market owns and operates five locations throughout Southern California in the Port of Los Angeles, Wilmington, Rancho's, Palos Verdes, Harbor City and Long Beach. The business has been family owned and operated since 1956. And San Pedro Fish Market is providing their specific concept that is a family style seafood menu with a fish market and a retail store. The recommendation is to receive the presentations from Mark Gilbert Enterprises and San Pedro Fish Market to present their concepts for the use and build out of the building. That completes my presentation. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Jenna. Very thorough report. We appreciate that. Nice overview. Any questions at this point for Jenna before we get into the presentations? All right. Don't see anyone. So we'll go right in. Hans, who's going to do the introductions for our presenters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That will be still is already.
Okay.
So the first proposer tonight will be Mark Gilbert Enterprises. I'm not, am I sharing my screen?
Yeah, we see it.
You do? Yeah.
There it is. Hey, I got hungry all of a sudden.
Thank you. So with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Gilbert's representative, Ken Turgen with Wild Drunken Dose, and I will assist with his slide presentation.
Good. Welcome, Ken. Haven't seen you in a while. Hope things are great.
But I have to wear this silly thing on my face because it says so.
Is it really you?
It is me. Mayor, members of the council. So you do know me. My name is Ken Turgen. I'm with Wild Drunken Dosed Architects. That's as far as I'll go with the well, we were representing Mr. Gilbert in this endeavor. We have very big knowledge of this building and of the wharf and of the city. But first slide, please. So Mark Gilbert, as most of you know, his dad, Jim Gilbert, was prolific on the wharf, owning many restaurants here and on the Santa Cruz Wharf. Family represented on in both counties, has been working widely. He worked with his dad for a number of years. In fact, one of his first jobs was this particular spot, working in the dish room and moving up into different ranks into Mr. Gilbert's relationships around county. Next slide. Again, he's Mr. Gilbert was and so that he was going to be here tonight. He just, he couldn't get away from some prior engagements that he couldn't get down here for. So he apologized for not being here. But anyway, back to Mr. Gilbert's, Gilbert Enterprises exclusively owns seaside food and beverage operations specifically up in Santa Cruz. He's got, we, they're basically three restaurants up there and I'll get to those in a second. Next slide. So the Firefish Grill is his larger restaurant in on the Santa Cruz Wharf. It features an exhibition kitchen with wood fire and basically the kitchen's right up front. And clientele get to see the operation as as the food comes out. He is, he's built that to a profitable enterprise through renovations that that he finished back in 2010. And basically it's that the Firefish Grill specializes in fast casual, fresh seafood and pasta dishes. Then he took what used to be a storage room and it was Malio's years ago as well on Santa Cruz Wharf and created a smaller, even more casual atmosphere with his Woody's Cafe, which is basically shares a very similar kitchen mixes together so that he has basically two concepts in one space, which is something that has always been touted on this wharf is to, especially when you have a 17,000 square foot space like this one, it's very difficult to run one 17,000 square foot restaurant. You need to kind of break it up a little bit in order to profitable and to bring people in. So that was, that was the impetus behind opening up Woody's and they operate continuously. He also has next door to Woody's. There's a gift shop that actually works with Woody's and with Firefish as well. The Dolphin Restaurant is, if you, if anybody's been down to the Santa Cruz Wharf. This, this is a small, what used to be a small diner way at the end of the wharf. And he fixed it up and really brought it to something that elevated the food and made it something that people go to all the time. People literally walk all the way out to the end of the wharf to go to the Dolph. And I guess it's the classic seafood spot. The locals love it and tourists get out there and you know, the umbrellas are out there and it's always sunny. Well, when it's not raining. But it next slide. And as I said, so Molly was on the wharf became Gilbert Seafood Grill. And then, you know, it was Scales last and you know, was it to us, it is the best location and has the best views on the war. Has the views of the yacht club and all the yachts on the one side, has the views on the inside, obviously of the walkways and the clientele who are taking in the the war. The space is large. It is a challenge to plan it properly. And you know, the coastal commission does not allow for the exterior seating on the first floor in the back, which is unfortunate, but it's that there are workarounds. So the the big thing that we want to bring to this is that past tenants have been and Jim Gilbert's dad was one of them as well, is drawing customers to the second floor. The second floor is, you know, part of that 17,000 square feet and the second floor remains wholly vacant or very, very poorly used. And it has literally the best view on the one. Slide please. So our proposed plan is to take that 17,000 square feet and split it up into restaurant, full bar and a gift shop. So the gift shop would be the ancillary spot, basically where the gift shop used to be. But then there will be circulation going upstairs to the the upper floor where there will be offices. But he want, we would like to keep the restaurant and what we call the dinner house and the exhibition kitchen down on the ground floor and then upstairs. And then upstairs, make it more of a um, a bar and grill upstairs and uh, bring clientele upstairs, locals. At local specifically with an outdoor dining space, which is fully exposed to the outside and and can be um, uh, utilized a lot better than it is right now. Um, basically what Mr. Gilbert wants to do is just focus on local fresh food. For an affordable price and and basically entice the locals to come out onto the wharf because that's one thing that really is difficult is to get a lot of us to come out there besides us. Uh, none of us will go out on a Saturday. Everybody knows that it just, it's impossible to park. It's impossible to get out there, but yeah, the the way Mr. Gilbert wants to do it is is on the ground floor with the uh, the the finer dining experience with an oyster bar and a um, uh, a chowder bar where he's going to make fresh chowders to order. Um, it's going to be a totally different concept than what was before, which we he would try to meld both the upper floor and the the lower floor and and work them both together. Excellent. So the 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 typical, uh, you've all read the the proposal. I just put some notes up here that, uh, you know, once the acceptance of a proposal is done, we can basically have improvements uh, finished within nine to twelve months. Uh, Mr. Gilbert has funded all of his um, remodels uh, himself, um, has not asked for money. He basically funds them all. He he gets the money together and uh, is able to establish gross sales. Uh, he estimates it between a five fifty five hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and thirty thousand in gross sales per month. Uh, to uh, basically seventy to a hundred million in gross revenues over a ten ten year period. Uh, and then I just broke down how the sales are broken down, food eighty percent, alcoholic beverage fifteen, non-alcoholic, uh, non-alcoholic beverages five. Um, next slide. So this is the space that I was just talking about. So the dinner house would be on the left. That's the ground floor. Uh, the gift shop would be on your right. We were utilizing the stairs there, but we have a better idea on how we're going to do that because we're going to get an elevator up there and uh, to get all tires up to the upper floor and utilize a bar and grill concept on the upper floor with outdoor dining in the back. As I said, the coastal commission doesn't allow us to use the ground floor because of uh, public right of way and allowance of public to go out there. Uh, but utilizing that upper floor uh, for that same dining experience would be tantamount to making the success of uh, to to making this successful. Excellent. And as I said, financial capacity, uh, he's done all his restaurant renovations himself, ranging from a hundred thousand to five hundred thousand. Depending on what he's been doing, um, his average grossly year sales right now with Firefish or six million Woody's is about four. And the Dolphin brings in about six. Uh, so he is able to finance all of his projects himself. Uh, based upon the gross sales and how his other restaurants are doing. Next slide. Mr. Gilbert's been known by the Monterey Bay community. He's been like, he's lived here and in Santa Cruz for all his life. Um, he um, has thirty years' experience seaside restaurant industry, whether it's in his own restaurants or with his dad. Um, uh, marketing, the the team that he's established, they successfully increase earnings at each restaurant that he's owned. Um, and uh, we, he fully wants to fund this project and and work with the city to get this thing going. Excellent. And that's it. Thank you for letting us to you guys.
Okay, don't, don't go anywhere, uh, Mr. Turgeon. There may be some questions. Any questions from the council at this point?
Uh, one, one question.
Yes, please. Uh huh.
Councilmember Ed. With the anticipation of the rough uh, use of the spaces. Uh, if we're, if it were to go uh, Mark's way, what would the time period be for renovation and anticipated opening uh, to be fully ready to go? Because you've seen the site, so what?
Not notwithstanding um, uh, time for plan check and and getting through city agencies. Not going to use that as a barometer. We're feeling with planning um, and uh, design and getting everything through or figuring we could basically get permits within nine to twelve months. Uh, and then the build out would probably be another nine-ish months depending. Um, supply chain issues are always a problem right now. Um, but uh, we feel pretty confident that with our knowledge of the building and and understanding of how this building is kind of set up, um, we can, we can hit the ground running pretty quickly.
Okay, but you're you're, there's a lot of unknowns, obviously, but you're you're basically admitting that the summer of twenty twenty three would be lost.
That's, well, I don't know if we'd be lost. I think we would be under construction. I think we could get through by if 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 all the planets align. Uh, it could be, we could be done by our Indian summer. So let's say the end of the summer of twenty twenty three.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, please, Councilmember Dan.
Interesting about the two different types of restaurants, one down below, which I would assume uh, would be a tourist restaurant. And then up above was the local restaurant. Can you kind of get into a little bit more detail on those the comparison and how? How are you getting locals to understand upstairs? Is that, what is the difference? And I I'm a little bothered.
It's it's basically the difference between fast casual and a dinner house. So the dinner house is going to be more of the sit down. You're going to take your time. You're going to and what we want to do is it's not just locals who we're going to find upstairs. Upstairs is going to be advertised enough that people understand that. Hey, you want to get a cocktail? You want to go sit upstairs and have a light bite? Same menu items you can get upstairs as well or downstairs. Um, it's it's not, it's it's going to be relatively the same food. It'll just be uh, in a uh, just a different format upstairs. So the design's going to feel different. It's going to feel more like a, let's call it a a um, uh, just a fast casual type of thing. So that, you know, it it, we're kind of looking at the millennials and the the younger crowd and how they go about eating and and dining that, you know. Yes, we would be, the the ground is always open to uh, bringing in tourists because that they're walking right by, right? Uh, Mr. Gilbert does not like to have, um, he calls them chowder hawkers. He doesn't like to have people out there kind of jamming chowder. He wants people to come in because they want to. And the way we're going to do that is we're going to bring the kitchen up front. The kitchen is really the thing that that really entices, if you've been to Firefish up in Santa Cruz, the 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 grill is just right there. The fire is right there. That everybody stops to look at it and and that's really what it's about. It's about the fire and the fish and it's about bringing it all to the table. And establishing inside that a um, an oyster bar. And another concept, which is his, he he has this this wonderful chowder that he does that's actually built, not just in a big soup tureen where it just gets put in a cup and there it goes. It's made for order and it's 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 done down a line. That's that's absolutely amazing. And um, he wants to bring that concept downstairs and upstairs, but the upstairs is going to be more of a a bar atmosphere, more of a casual atmosphere, almost like a gastropub, but with the same, they will go up and down.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, very well explained. Thanks. Anyone else on questions at this point?
Questions? Had familiarity with the building. Could you speak to that? What what exactly is the familiarity?
I designed the last one.
Okay, so you designed scales. Um, could you speak? So have you seen the building since the former subtenant left?
It made me cry.
Yeah, okay. So it's going to take a lot of work to uh, repair the damage that was done by the former subtenant. Do you have, does um, do you and and uh, and uh, the proposer, is there an estimate on what it's going to cost to to do the renovations and? Is that not something you can speak to right now?
It's it's
I'm sorry.
It's it's a little difficult to to
Okay, that's, that's okay. I'll take that question.
What's underneath right now?
Yeah.
Uh, so we'll, we'll talk about the
Okay.
Proposed terms and price and that kind of thing in the in the close session.
Okay, and then I guess my last question would be um, the um, the, you mentioned the the renovations would include an elevator, correct? Okay, and gosh, I kind of lost track of my question, my other question, because there seemed to be a lot of kerfuffle there. Uh.
Was it me or you?
Uh, I don't know. Um, gosh, I don't want to forget that question. Um. Oh, yeah.
Get back to you. Oh, there you go.
Yeah, so um, you mentioned that he's never asked for any kind of like help with the renovations that he did up in Santa Cruz. And so is that what you anticipate that um, that he anticipates he'll be able to handle the renovations on his own?
Yeah, it it it'll be either a lot of it'll be self-funded. He will have um, uh, some, some bank loans he'll need to take out for it. Uh, when I mean help, he was, he would never ask for help from the city or anything like that.
That's what I was trying to clarify.
Help leases with the city of Santa Cruz for, oh God, uh, it's it's almost twenty years now. And he has a great relationship with the city of Santa Cruz and works directly with them on the wharf. So he has an intrinsic knowledge of working with a wharf property and under a city, uh, a city lease.
Thank you.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Yes, please, Councilmember Tyler.
Um, my only question is, uh, what do you see as the biggest challenge moving forward uh, with this kind of project?
There are many challenges in projects like this. Um, I I I don't see any one challenge. Um, really as something that's going to really stand out as as being the biggest. I think time is going to be our biggest challenge. Because it doesn't benefit the city to have a vacant property in the middle of a of a wharf like this and we know that. And we know that um, uh, where our 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 biggest push comes these days and I call it um, systemic of the pandemic and I hate the fact that it rhymes. Um, but it, the municipalities, and I don't blame anyone, please, if you're watching, I'm, I love all of you. Um, because you have all my drawings. Um, it just, a lot of things are slowed down. And to get approvals really does take a lot of time. And one of the approvals that will take the longest would be uh, the coastal commission. Now, the way I see this project, though, the way we can fast track it is that we can do the exterior improvements as a separate project. And get the interior improvements going and get this pro- property uh, cash positive early. While we're going through coastal commission to get the facade done and say, excuse our appearance. Here's what we got inside, but this is what it's going to look like later because I know it's going to take a year to get through just coastal mission alone. And that's why Yeah. I I I respectfully said, aside from approvals, what we can do. And I know working with the city of Monterey, we have uh, there there are things in play that we can do to expedite specific things like getting building permits. We we don't really need a demo permit, but we will need to get building permits fast. Um, so you know, there are things that we that that, so to answer your question in a long, in a long format. The, I think the the biggest challenge is going to be to get the approvals where we need them to be. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a very exciting proposal. Thank you so much, Ken. Enjoyed that a lot. Okay, Jenna, would you introduce our next presenters, please?
Next up is San Pedro Fish Company. And I will pull up their presentation. Before the
Where's that? It's on the ocean.
Hello, everyone. Sorry, my name's Uh, I am one of the owners of San Pedro Fish Market. Great to meet all of you. We'll go through the proposal. I know everyone's had a long day. I have too. I spent the last five touring colleges around the country with my daughter. I don't even know what time it is right now. Go through this briefly. So this is um, a bottom picture is our, is our San Pedro location. That's our exterior deck just for reference. So this is my family. Um, we've, my grandfather started the business over sixty-five years ago. We're going into the fourth generation now. We own, but we've set four Guinness World Records for what we do. We do have six locations and combined, we serve about two and a half million customers a year, or what we call making memories is how we look at that. Um, there's some of, some awards. Those are some of our brands and um, that's my sister, my two brothers, my uncle, myself in the picture. Let's go to next page. This is our social media. This is how we drive our customers in and how we speak about our brand. We found after sixty years of being head down butt up, working. People didn't know who we were or what we did, so we had to find a way to tell our story. So when social media showed up, that's what we started to do. Um, you'll stand and I and I share these with you because you can go to all those pages and get a pretty good idea of who we are, what we do and how our brand works. Um, let's go to seven if you want.
I don't know which one's seven.
Seven. Community involvement, yeah. This is an example of some of the things we've done for our local community. Uh, we do a lot of scholarship work. We do a lot of meal donations. Um, we do a lot of fundraising. Um, that's us when on the top corner where we set our first Guinness World Record. The other three were in one day when we used our annual lobster festival. We did that for about twenty years. We don't do that any longer because I think our bodies can handle cooking thirty thousand lobsters in a weekend anymore.
Wow.
Yeah, that was a, was a lot. Um, and then on the bottom corner, you'll see some of the scholarship work that we did for the local schools. What I noticed and why we set that up was there was a lot of uh, bad press going around in the community and it was tough to go to some of the meetings and listen to people speaking badly. And you had all these kids that were being raised with these negative narratives about their own community. So what we did is we created the scholarship program and what we incentivized the kids to tell us what they loved about their community and put it on the YouTube. And then we did it for each of the schools and we gave those scholarship checks away for the ones that got the most views. And what it did was it helped to build up the community, the stories of the community, but it incentivized the kids to share those stories with the whole world. Uh, was a really wonderful program. We did it right up until COVID. We'll probably start it up again soon. It got a little boring because all the kids started getting in their cars, just driving around, taking pictures of the favorite places, their favorite places to go out and eat. We needed to figure out incentivize more creativity because people stopped watching. Um, all right, let's go to the page eight. This is, this is our web series. This is, um, again, this is how we tell our stories. It's going to be appearing on television, we believe, uh, I think next year. We're currently in, I think it's season eight and what we do with this is we we do a couple of different things. This is one of the ways we we tell people who we are and what we do. But we also use it to promote local businesses and local communities because we're in several cities now. So this, what we see here is this would be a place where we could have an entire episode or 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 parts of a storyline that would go through the season, talking about our move into this area and how we're expanding. And we can fi- highlight the history and stories of of the Monterey community, just as an example. This, this garners. Um, I'm not sure where we are now. We work at close to fifty-five million views over the course of the series. Which is mostly on social media, but it is on some streaming channels like Roku where you can find it. And again, it's all linked on to our on to our social media pages on our website. Any questions about that? I've thrown a lot of information out. I'm happy to to answer it anytime. Okay, let's go to our next one. So next one is our core values. This is what our business is about, um, how we lead by example. Um, we always, I I think family is probably the most important. Like I said, I'm I'm third generation. We're moving into the fourth generation for family. Um, we always treat our customers like family. We always make our customers feel like family, but it's really the community that's most important because they are family. That's why, like I was highlighting in the past slides, what we've done to to help community. And then it's really important to be passionate about what we do. That's part of how we set the culture. It's how, it's part of how we expect our employees to act with customers when we hire them. And these core values are what we use when we're deciding on if somebody is an appropriate fit for our organization. They have to be able to lead without being entitled, have really good ethics. They have to understand the importance of family and they need to be passionate about their job. If not, they're not going to be a good fit in the culture. And we found that these, these are the three primary core values that matter most. Um, let's go to number ten. Oh, wait, hour ten, sorry. We can probably actually, one, so the next one, I'll tell you when it's up. Nick, yeah, right there. This is just an example of this is an example of what we carry. Um, we have a, we we source seafood from all over the world. I think what's important about this and why this, this is one of the showcases in our new location. What's really key about this is we consider ourselves to be an experiential brand. What we've uh, sort of invented by accident when we built our current location and rebuilt, which would be in nineteen eighty-two. Is we created a way for the customers to design their own seafood trays. That's what we're famous, what we're known for. So we sell everything by the pound. And customers can come in and pick any combination of seafood that we sell and we make it into a seafood tray. This is just an example of what those chase choices would look like. No, there's a, uh, I think we may have passed over early on what those trays look like. Let me see. You'd have to probably go to our social media. If you go to page five, this is, but wait, there's more on accomplishments if you go back. That those trays are an example of customers creating their own seafood trays and they're mostly family style. So yes, we do have a menu for people like, I can't figure this out. There's too many choices. I just want, you know, I just want kind of chowder, fish and chips, calamari seafood. We do all that too. But this is really what we're known for and this is what sets us apart. And what's cool about this And what's cool about this is I started to notice on a lot of different places, people copying this, uh, which we don't take offense to. Actually, I find it kind of flattering. Redondo Beach, Las Vegas, there's a food truck that sells San Pedro shrimp trays. I don't know who they are. I kind of would like to, but, um, I think it's really cool. And what's different is I think what we accidentally created here back in the eighties and what's become really iconic for us now is we became one of the first, like experiential brands where customers can go in. And like I said, they can design their own seafood experience. So we kind of look at the tray that the food goes on as like a blank canvas. And the customers can paint it anywhere they like. I'm gonna stop there for now and see if there's any questions. That, that's essentially what we do. Um, I can talk a little bit about what we're looking to do with this location, if you like, but I don't know.
I think that would be.
Question, but should I wait until the end? What's your?
No, go ahead. Go ahead. Uh, please, Alan.
Fine. I, I don't have too much more to offer, so.
Okay, so it sounds like part of it, uh, of the experience is you pick your food and then you guys prepare it. Would you anticipate, um, one of the things the city of Monterey has been promoting is kind of our local, locally caught seafood? How would that fit into this? What, how do you imagine how much of the seafood that people would be looking at there and picking would be? Um, brought in from other places? How much of it would be Monterey Bay caught? How do you see that work?
Well, I think it's essential to support the local fishermen. Like, that's, that's how we made our name, obviously where we're at. We never ever turn the local guys away. We buy as much as we can, and then we only buy outside when we can't, when it's not sufficient to supply the demand of the customer base. So the local always comes first. Uh, yeah, all of our crab actually comes from Santa Barbara as an example of our local crab. And we've, we use the same vendor there for thirty years. So we did do, we would do that for sure. I, I can't say off the top of my head who we know here, but I was told by my uncle, our founder, that he does have relationships with a lot of the, a lot of fishermen here. So yeah, we would, that would be essential. It really comes down also what the customers are asking for. So we'll, we'll always offer everything locally caught. We'll, we'll, we'll be able to show where it comes from, when it was caught, any information that we can offer. People love to see that. I love to see it personally when I'm eating out as well. Really, it really helps you tie into the narrative and the story about what the, what the product is. So it's not like, oh, you got this in a freezer from five years ago. No, we don't do that. I mean, I mean, you can't succeed for sixty-five years on waterfront and, and, uh, where we're at that way. You have to take care of not just the community, but also all the local fishermen.
Other questions, uh, before, uh?
Mayor, I got a quick question. Um, the, uh, seventeen thousand square feet includes, uh, the front section on the right. That's formerly a gift store. So how do you anticipate your use of the actual facility? Would you still have a, um, a gift store, or would it all be restaurant?
No, we, we would definitely have a gift store. We've incorporated that into our, our, our newest location on Long Beach. Uh, we have a lot of branded items that we sell. We have a lot of sauces, spices are available on Amazon. Um, some of them have been in grocery stores on and off over the years. That, that's like a side project of ours. We definitely have enough manpower for, it's a different, different ballgame. Um, so we would do that. Um, we do have a lot, a lot of, and we, we could also carry, um, but like what I'd like to do is have locally branded products that have like sort of the Monterey history with our brand. I think that would be really cool. Um, on the upstairs, w- we are looking at using that, um, as a combination banquet space. Our restaurant in, in San Pedro, we built an upstairs banquet area that's become really popular for events on weekends. We, it also helps for weekday events. There's, there's always somebody that needs a, a business place to have a meeting, and it's got an incredible view. We're doing that in our Long Beach location now too. And then I'd like to be able to incorporate sort of an oyster bar or, or seafood cocktail bar upstairs too. I think that would be great.
Okay. And the same question I gave the last, uh, time for, uh, rebuild. I know it's a broad brush, but what, what are you thinking? Seen, you've seen the site, so what are you thinking?
I think we're kind of aligned on that, although obviously you have a much better relationship with the local city than I, than we do. I know we've built, we built an open three restaurants in two years. Uh, one of them on the waterfront, and we're in the process of, of redesigning and new rebuild for us. So we do also do, uh, we have a team that's dedicated specifically to deal with coastal commission issues, local city issues. Um, their premier team, they, they've done some great projects. Um, so I would like to be able to see it done in nine to twelve months, but again, I think that's also going to be depend on, on the local requirements around permitting coastal permissions. It's, it's the same, Sam, I don't, I don't think we would be any different on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Anything else?
Now, did you want, uh, I, did you want to elaborate a little more, uh, about how you would use concession thirty? You've talked a little bit about upstairs and a gift shop and, and what would your main restaurant look like?
Oh, sure. Well, um, so the newest restaurant we built, I think is probably the, the closest model to what we'll do here because it incorporates what's worked in all the locations. They have a really large seafood selection. And then you, as you be able to pick it, the, the kitchen's always open. Our cooking styles are, are pretty simple. We do have some, some elaborate dishes that will, we, we intend to incorporate, like we've started doing a new sweet and sour. Uh, calamari that I think is awesome. I, I didn't think, our chef knows what he's doing. Um, but primarily what we like to do is, as people are able to pick their own combination of seafoods, they swordfish, shrimp, king crab. Um, they want to see it prepared. So the way our, our legacy location, our original location is the seafood cases are in the front. They turn around and they can actually watch it get cooked behind them. It was designed that way by accident, not by purpose. So in this sign, we think exactly what we'd be doing without the, it wouldn't be behind you. It'd all be in a kind of an open display kitchen. But that's, people like the show, part of the experience.
I have another question.
May I ask another question?
Please, yeah. Good, good discussion.
So, um, do you anticipate a family member who would be managing, kind of general manager? Do you have somebody you've already identified who could up, up here, who could potentially? Have you thought about who's actually going to be managing this site as compared to?
That's a great question. Um, so we have a lot of employees that have been with us twenty or thirty years. Um, and we're now hiring outside people, like I brought, uh, Greg Winaldi with us, who's our director of operations. He's got a lot of experience in multi-location and what, what his pri- one of his primary purposes is identifying who in the family isn't, doesn't want to do it, but who's capable and willing to learn. Because we're, we're trying to elevate people up into new positions. I have a couple that I've identified, but, um, uh, we're, we're pretty flexible on that. I mean, we, um, how to say it? It's like we've, we've, now we've had a, uh, we've, we've had, we've had a business that's been run by family for sixty-five years. And some of us are, um, some of us have a lot of experience, but the key to expanding in a, a new domain like this is you've got to bring in people from the outside too. But they need to fit those core values I showed you earlier. Makes a great example of this. He, he, I mean, not only looks like my brother, but he actually almost could fit into the family, you know? So, um, we've managed to find, uh, quite a, we've, we've been really fortunate to find some, some people, especially because of COVID. So many people, uh, kind of left the industry and now they're coming back on, on their own terms and, and we can set those terms for them. Great, great opportunities. We also, you know, a four oh one, we've done a fantastic benefits package. We help people with their education. Actually, I'd like to add education as one of our core values. I've been, uh, hitting the family pretty hard on that. Because I think the way that the world has changed, especially after COVID, if you're not continually educating yourself, you're going to be, you're going to lose business capital. Thank you. The help. Yep.
Can I, uh, Mayor, can I follow up with a question on?
Of course, Councilmember Ed.
You said something that prompted, nice, nice haircuts. We like those. Um, so.
Shaving cream away at the airport, by the way.
No.
So we know industry-wide, uh, hospitality has suffered from losing personnel. And this being a site that's a long ways away from where your home base is. Uh, I'd like to hear a little bit more about your approach to, um, the staff that you're going to need for such a large restaurant. And what numbers do you think that you would need to employ here? And, uh, the hurdles, I think, uh, probably the same thing down there that you're suffering from trying to get people to be back in hospitality. How do you suppose you would be competitive to lure your people to come to work for you? When every one of the restaurants down there will tell you, they're probably running at twenty, twenty to twenty-five percent short right now.
I, yeah, this is, it's great. Um, and we have been for quite a long time too. So we've, we've had to become lean and mean, find ways to create new incentives to draw people in. Are we full, are we back almost? What percentage shorter we know? Yeah, so we're, we're coming back, but we're also moving into the slow season, so we'll probably stay where we are and it'll balance out. Um, but, I mean, I, I don't want to speak, but Greg's come up with a lot of great ways to incentivize people. You want to give me a couple of examples today?
Yeah.
They're really innovative.
Get on mic.
You want to come up? I don't want to talk operate. No, I think it comes back, I think it comes down to how you treat individuals. And, uh, you know, when we, when we saw a large amount of people leave this industry, they all said to themselves, you know, what is there out there that I have not received in this industry for thirty plus years? Uh, they, they always viewed that there's something else out there, but it's, it could be better. And then when you listen to them, they all said the same thing. The offerings, the how I'm treated and, and the flexibility and, and all these different things that most people get with other industries that they don't get in the hospitality. So what we ultimately did is look back at us and then look back at what we could do for them to provide that flexibility. So once we started to do that, um, what we saw was a complete turnaround. Where people all of a sudden looked at us and said, wow, you know, you get it. And now you're treating us in a certain way. So I think it's really just taking the individual and really catering to their need today. And not what the industry was thirty years ago. Because that, that doesn't mix anymore. We're, we're also bringing in a lot of, uh, I don't want to call it coaching, but some really innovative, um, education programs that. How do you describe it? It's like we're, we're teaching people to be leaders without being, uh, bullies, I would say. You know, like the old school way of running businesses, you know, I grew up. Old school, there was a lot of screaming and yelling. So what we're trying to, is really what we're, what we're calling, like we're tossing lines of hope. When we're trying to teach people to come to their own conclusions about what's better. And as a, as a result of that, we're elevating the new leadership or we're finding leadership opportunities. And what we're finding as they come in and they follow these programs, which is an eighteen week program that we're inst- we're, we're actually instituting out of the company. That, you know, people feel like they've been listened to to for the first time that they were. Because we're finding that four hundred employees right now have a lot of things to offer, but they didn't feel they had a voice. And that alone, just feeling valued, really, uh, increased retention. Like people aren't leaving like they were. For a while during COVID, everyone was like, I got my check, I'm out here. I got, I got six other job offers. But with the real, so I don't, I don't have the opportunity to, to speak my, uh, you know, what I'm thinking, what I'm feeling, and actually feel like I contributed to the business. Just showing up to work and going. And we're, we're trying to eliminate.
One last question. I'm looking at the distribution list, and I don't know your name.
I'm Michael, sorry.
Okay, and what's your last name?
Ungaro.
Okay, and so that's the family, family tradition, that's the, the founder's name.
Yes, my, my grand, well, my grandfather was Mackie. I mean, it was really Michael, but there was a letter missing, and I think the accent was they just called him Mikey.
That's blaming on Ellis Island or something.
Remember downtown San Pedro on the wharf.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, any more questions?
Yeah, I, I have a question, but I'll let, I know that Tyler's been waiting.
Okay, Councilmember Tyler, please, go ahead.
I was just wondering how, um, if at all, is sustainability incorporated into the concept of the idea?
A big question here for sure. Um, yeah, I thought a lot about that. We, we try to manage that as much as we can in the San Pedro area, and, and I don't think it'll be an issue here. In San Pedro, with the volume that we have, it's, it's hard to do better than like probably sixty perci- I'd say sixty to seventy percent of the choices in the showcase. Meet the green and, uh, was it, sorry, the green and yellow bars here. They're in the red because we do sell a lot of shrimp, but, and we're trying to find a way to meet sustainability on shrimp. But that's a challenge because we sell two hundred tons a year, and it's not, it's, it's hard. I don't anticipate that'll be an issue here. It's why I think we'll go mostly local. Um, and it is something we're working on. I mean, you can't be in business for sixty-five years without taking, but, and we're on city-owned land. So the, I'm always in front of the city council, the board of harbor commissioners, the director of the port of LA. Or all, and, and we deal with ghost commission sometimes too. So we're always trying to balance between what the criterion standards are between the community and, and the government versus what the customers want. It, it's hard, right? Especially when you bring in as many people as we do, but we've always managed to find a way to do it. I think we'll be fine here too.
Thank you. Good, Councilmember Dan?
Yeah, thank you. So, um, our wharf has a lot of history and it has a lot of, of, um, culture, I'll say, down on the wharf. And, uh, businesses have been there and families have been there for, seems like a hundred years or, and more. And you've, you've, uh, toured the wharf, and you also have been to quite a few other wharfs. And we like to believe, or I like to believe that our, our wharf is unique on, on the West Coast. But like I said, you've been to a lot of wharfs. What, what brought you to Monterey and why would you like this particular wharf and not other wharf?
I, I don't know how much you know about what's going on on our waterfront right now. Maybe, maybe you do or don't. Mostly every single business has been evicted and torn down and turned into a sidewalk except for us. Um, and we've been working, it's been hard to watch because we, the, we were there in fifty, well, we moved from fifty-six about a mile up from the waterfront, fifty-nine, we moved down to the waterfront. And we watched all this build up around us, and then we rebuilt in the middle of it, and it too. Um, it's, it's, um, it's even harder to talk about, to be honest with you. It's just rough, it's rough. I came here and I felt like I walked back in time to how our, how our business was when I was a kid.
Exactly.
Yeah, the last thing I would ever want to do is mess with that. I want to be able to fit in and be part of it. Because it's like, I think, I, I didn't understand until I came here today because my brother came in and he's, oh, yes, excuse me so long. I go, all right, okay. Today going, uh, this is what he's talking about. This is what it was like when we grew up before somebody, you know, decided it was better to tear it all down and rebuild it. And for ten years that's been going on and it's nothing built yet. We managed to stay. Um, wow. Sorry, but I do, I can relate to that.
Did they start some kind of urban renewal, then it fell flat? Is that what you're saying? The idea was to rebuild restaurants?
Yeah, there was, um, the buildings were old and they're in just repair and, and, um, the idea was to turn it into what I think what you see in downtown LA, like LA Live. Uh, and it might happen someday. I don't know. Um.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So last, last question. Let's cook your squid.
I can't, I can't tell you that. I can send some up to you though. We do ship. Well, it, is it tartar sauce or red sauce? Uh, we do both, actually. We have our own deep fry mix that we do, and or we can mix it in with the trays. We have options, but we do sell several hundred pounds. Okay. Italian or Sicilian?
Come on, you guys.
I, I'm both, but Josephine's a hundred percent Sicilian.
Oh, that's funny. Okay, we, we thank you very kindly for your, your presentation. All the best in college hunting. We have, we have two grandkids in college and three this year in the same process. Going to colleges and looking around to see where they're going to be next year, the high school seniors, so.
Yeah, it's, it's fun, but it's hard.
Yes, it is.
My daughter graduated, moved to New York and has a job there. She showed up all dressed up and her younger sister, who I was touring with. Like, when's she going to get here? And she's standing next to you. She just looks like a grownup now.
Yeah, I know. It's, thank you so much, and we appreciate your presentation and, and Ken, yours as well. Just really exciting. And if there, let's see if we have any public comment in the council chambers, please, Nat, on the presentation.
We do not here in council chambers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Clementine, anybody online wanted to comment about our, the two presentations?
Uh, nobody has any hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, then again, we'll bring it back to the council and from here, as we outlined earlier, um, we will continue our discussion. Uh, in closed session. And we have a lot to talk about and think about with two very exciting proposals. All right, so again, we'll get back up, come on up to the agenda. Here we go. Just bear with me, please. I had to change windows. All right, council comments. Anybody you'd like to start? What have you been doing outside of your distant boards and jurisdictions?
I'd like to get us going, if that's okay.
Sure, please do, Councilmember Alan.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to, um, you know, remark on a comment Wendy Brickman from the Wharf Association made about, um, the council appealing to the coastal commission. And I think we should do that. So I just want to put, put myself on record. I do think that the city should support. Um, an appeal to the coastal commission so that we got a lot of noise here, so that our restaurants can continue to operate, um, outside. I don't believe that it's a hindrance at all to tourists who want to see things. And as somebody who has health concerns about eating inside, I won't eat inside. I think it's actually an access issue. There are a lot of people that are not going to be able to eat inside for, for a while yet. And so it's actually an access issue to provide people with the opportunity to be able to enjoy dining on the wharf, in our waterfront, to be able to eat outside. So that's my comment.
And you really made a good point, I think, when the coastal commission wants to talk about coastal access, right? But, and even though some people, some of the, the, uh, CDC and who said the pand- pandemic's over, well, you know, it's, it's manageable, but the fact that people can be outside is coastal access. is coastal access and that should play really well with the coastal commission. That's what they're all about. It's a good point. Councilmember Dan, anything, uh, on your outside agencies and activities?
Um, I don't have anything to report on the boards that I sit on. However, um, I did attend, um, the Villa Del Monte and the, um, Monta Vista or Monterey Vista.
Yeah.
Cues. And it's always great to go to, um, to neighborhood, um, uh, functions because, uh, it really bonds the, the neighborhoods together to see so many people having fun, especially now, uh, when we couldn't do that over the last two years. So I, I appreciate the neighborhood. And, and it was a lot of fun. And then the next thing I wanted to mention is that, um, in public comment, uh, there was a mention of a survey that is circulating around the city of Monterey. And I wanted to make sure the council, the staff and the communities know that that survey was not authorized by me or my campaign, period. I just want everybody to know that I had nothing to do with that and my campaign had nothing to do with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. Councilmember Tyler?
Yeah. So, uh, just reporting out first on, uh, Monterey One Water, the outside agency that I represent the city of Monterey on. Um, the action item that we took at our September board meeting, um, was the approval of Monterey One Water entering into an inter-agency, uh, cooperation agreement regarding the Monterey microgrid and renewable energy projects with Regen. Um, so I think there's an exciting opportunity that's presented there for us to, um, reuse energy, um, that's currently not being captured to support the, um, energy use for, uh, our agency at Monterey One Water, um, and the newly renamed Regen, um, Monterey. So just giving that update as far as that progress moving in, forward in that direction and, um, excited to see, um, the pathway that that takes. And, um, so that's it for, for Monterey One Water. And I will just take a moment to, um, give it some appreciation to Dan for, um, coming out and sharing clarity regarding the push-pull that's, um, that's being circulated right now. It's, it's helpful to hear that clarity. I hope that Dan can, can also provide them additional reassurance that, um, whoever's doing this can come out from behind private efforts of doing this behind the scene and be honest about the lies that they're pushing out against me. Because that's exactly what they are and they're intending to stoke fear um, in divisiveness within our community. And I don't think that that's what any of us want. I think we all need to rise above this. And this is something that we see every election cycle and I think we need to move beyond this. I think we need to come together as a community, focus on the issues that are most important to our residents and you know, I, 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 I think it's about creating a space for us to not create divisiveness. And this is a really dangerous path that we're going down in our community. Um, this isn't about race or sexual orientation. This is about every single one of us. And today it's one thing and tomorrow it can be the next. And I hope that Dan and his campaign can stand with me, um, and affirming that these lies are not going to be accepted in our community and that we're going to rise above that.
Thank you, Councilmember Ed.
Yeah, thank you. Um, also attended the Monterey Vista picnic, had a great time. Food was great. Um, and good to see everybody. We had a little bit of sunshine that day. So that was great. Uh, Wendy Crankman, uh, called in earlier just to highlight in case some of, uh, the viewers now might've missed that to advertise again, the wharf uh, birthday party on Sunday. I think the time was one o'clock. Uh, live music. So, uh, it, it should be a great weekend down there. Uh, want to highlight and thank you to the firefighters, all the members of the public safety that did such a, a dynamic, um, job on Sunday, right? Sunday, uh, of, uh, stamping out the, the fire and controlling it and working so rapidly. Uh, just the, the epitome of professionalism. Uh, well-trained, well-coordinated, well-communicated. Uh, thank you to the city manager for the ongoing to let us know. Uh, I'm sure many of you as well. I got a few texts, a few phone calls uh, of people wondering, you know, what, what's going on, but we really appreciated that coordinated effort from uh, fire and all of the law enforcement, uh, efforts that took place on that event. Uh, last week, Monday, uh, the Chamber, Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce Leadership Luncheon. Uh, I know, um, Dan was going to, um, be there, was not able to attend. Tyler, you were there. And, uh, I represented the city of Monterey as the vice mayor. And I just want to run through rapidly in twenty seconds, the topics without detail. You know how those go, three or four minutes is wrapped. There's about sixteen other people. And about fourteen of them had talked about water and housing. So I went a different direction because it had been already talked about. So, also highlighted that we'd had a great summer, um, indicated to, uh, the group that, uh, we did a fund transfer recently, uh, to fund, uh, additional to reserves and CPI accounts, uh, Monterey, two hundred and fifty-two years. Um, glad that we could see everybody and how good it was to see everybody at a big pub, public event like that. Also that our city manager, uh, is now under a five-year contract. As is, uh, Chrissy, our city attorney. Kudos to those. Significant to have those two parts. People, individuals that are doing such a good job, uh, to be with us in contract for five more years. Highlighted that we, uh, just going into district elections, uh, labor negotiations, ongoing and almost done with all of them, uh, still, uh, one or two to finish up. Commented briefly on the coastal commission with the wharf and the tables. I think clean and safe was my goal, our city's goal. And I think that, oh, and I highlighted the fact that we have five hundred and fifty inclusionary housing and that we support the opportunity to have additional housing, uh, because we've got a track record that we proved that we're interested in doing that. And water, water, water. So I think that was it. I might've forgot a few, but that's what I highlighted. And hello, Mayor.
Wow, you packed a lot into your three minutes.
I got the.
At the chamber.
To stop.
Yeah. Hey, great. Thank you. Um, I had the, uh, privilege of attending last week, a, uh, meeting and dinner of the National Trust for Historic Preservation, which as you know, um, is the owner of Alta Cafe, the Cooper Malera, Adobe's, the barn, as well as Chela. Uh, outstanding event. There were lots of city people there and the National Trust was very grateful, specifically spoke about the support that, of the city of Monterey from council commissions to staff in order to make it happen. And they're doing very, very well. They consider this their keystone, their flagship, so to speak, where they've taken a historical property, incorporated modern uses. And it's profitable and it's just, uh, the, the new paradigm in order to, um, maintain historic properties because standalone museums and so on just don't make it. So it was an excellent event. The, the barn, as usual, events by classic, um, I'm always amazed at how, how wonderful the food can be and serving over a hundred people. So a great event. Then we had a reception put on by the Nanow Monterey Sister City Association down at, uh, at, uh, come on, Dan, help me, uh, the hotel.
Castle Mooners.
Castle Mooners, right. And so we, uh, greeted and talked with, uh, three people from the now and, and it looks like junior wings will be starting up again. There's some excitement about the program where eighth graders from Colton, now called Monta Vista, are enabled to go to Nanow, stay with host families. And vice versa, then the now students come here on a whirlwind tour. It lasts about eight or ten days and it's so interesting when the, uh, the young people get together. There's, uh, they're shy, of course, and, and just meeting new people. And by the end of the week, they're all brothers and sisters. And, and there's cheers when people have to leave and, and even though, um, many of the Japanese youngsters study English, there's a slight language barrier by, by the end of the week, there isn't. It, it's so heartwarming. So the children will lead the way. They give me hope. So I really want to salute, uh, Mayor Dan, who, who chairs that and the whole committee and everybody, uh, and Randy, who helped host that. It was just a great event. Then also you all may have had the opportunity to drop by uh, the Japanese-American club that had a reception here this weekend. And Mr. Larry Oda has been re-elected as the president of the entire JACL Association for the entire country. They meet in San Francisco. He has done it before, ten or twelve years ago. And I had a chance to, uh, chat with Jeff Uchita, who's been the president of our local JACL, local educator. Uh, he's on the MP, MPUSD school board. He talked a little bit about the, uh, new program called Alder where the school district is given a stipend and helping people get master's degrees and credentials with the hopes, with the guarantee of a job and the hope that they'll stay here and they're able to stay here because we were talking earlier about hospitality and the difficulty of finding employees when we know that's true. Uh, with a many, um, city and school district employees, a twenty percent turnover in MPUSD and that's, that's really high. So those were just three, uh, three excellent events, all made possible by wonderful, wonderful people, international as well as local. So we have a city manager reports, please.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, very briefly, um, for our next council meeting on, uh, October eighteenth, we plan to bring forward, uh, a letter, uh, to the coastal commission, which we'd like the council to view and approve, which will deal with just the topics that were brought up during public comments and also during council comments, which is outdoor seating. Um, we were lucky with the fire on Aguahito.
Yes.
Just because, uh, Cal Fire had all the assets available and within forty-five minutes, we had four air tankers and three helicopters out there and multiple units, uh, um, that were firefighting there, including I think two or three engines from the city of Monterey. Um, that could have gone sideways, but, but we were really, uh, lucky at that time. The fire marched, marched actually relatively fast up the hill, but, uh, uh, the containment was, um, the containment was actually achieved through fire retardants and then the, the burn of four to five acres was basically what, 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 what was happening. And while the fire was completely, uh, surrounded by fire retardant. Last but not least, uh, vaccine clinic. Uh, we are, uh, we applied for vaccines and got vaccines. Uh, again, we will host the vaccine clinic on October fourteenth, that is a Saturday, at, uh, the Monterey Fire Station thirteen. Everyone knows where that is. In case you don't, it's at Montecito. And, uh, nobody knows what Fire Station thirteen is. So it's, it's at Montecito. Um, and, um, uh, I think that is also a great district to host that. We will have all vaccines available, including, including booster shots. But also the latest booster shots, but also for those who, who haven't had vaccines, and we will have Johnson and Johnson and Moderna and also Pfizer first doses there. So uh, we, we hope that a lot of people will show up. It will be on Saturday, October fourteenth from twelve to seven PM. Uh, at, um, the, uh, Fire Station Alden Montecito. And that's all what I have for today.
Oh, that's excellent. But Hansel, you were talking and also Ed about the fire. We could actually see, um, we could see it from our house in behind the old capital site and below Aguahito, what, um, uh, excuse me, the Jacks Peak Park. What amazed me were the, uh, the pilots of the various planes, the planes, how they could circle, drop the fire retardant exactly where they wanted it and get out of there. And the helicopters were circling. They would come in. It actually would disappear in the smoke. And I'm thinking about the pilots that are piloting these helicopters. And I thought that was just, um, uh, absolutely amazing. So they would come in, they would drop uh, water and then they'd circle out. The next one would come in and I was told they got the money, about, excuse me, the water from the Del Monte Golf Course Pond. And they would take the water and that continual circulation. And for my house, it looked like they were really close together and they may have been. But I thought, wow, what, what gratitude for being able to put that fire out and the pilots who were able to maneuver so well for all of us. That, that was just impressive. Cal Fire just really came through. So as well as all of the local fire departments. Before we adjourned to closed session, was there anyone in the audience, uh, in, in the chambers or online who wanted to talk about any of the closed session items? The two in the afternoon were continued to this evening. So do we have any public comment in the council chambers about closed session?
No, Mr. Mayor.
And do we have any online?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Well, with that, once again, very interesting council meeting. I always learn so much from the public staff and my colleagues on the city council. Now, whether I'll miss that or not, we'll talk about that at a different meeting. And so we'll take a break. Let's all get back together in about, say, ten minutes for our closed session, eight thirty-five? All right. So thank you all. Good night.